Good evening. We will call to order this meeting of the Salem Housing Authority. Today is January 11th. Happy New Year. We have three meetings tonight. We'll start with Housing Authority, move to Urban Renewal Agency, and then City Council Meeting. For those of you who are wondering what I'm doing sitting here, I chair the Housing Authority. And with that, if we could have the roll call.
Commissioner Anderson?
President.
Commissioner Bennett?
Here.
Commissioner McCoy?
Here.
Commissioner Dickey?
Here.
Commissioner Benjamin?
Here.
Commissioner Bednarz?
Here.
Commissioner Lewis?
Here.
Commissioner Karavayev?
Here.
Chair Nanki?
Here. If you'd please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
With that, we have no additions or deletions to the agenda. We have no public comment. Commissioner McCoy, that would move us to the consent calendar.
I move approval of the consent calendar.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bednarz. Any discussion questions? I just had noticed in the revisions to the administrative plan for Section 8 housing, it's like they were busy in the federal halls here apparently on this one.
Yes, Mr. Chair, the HUD is actively reforming a lot of their policies. I think very quickly we'll be seeing a fair housing policy that's completely different than from what we've been working on. So they're pretty active.
Yes. Yeah, a lot of times we'll have a couple of small changes, but it was like going on in pages worth of all the modifications they put in for this year, so. Other than that, I'd also notice that we have the homeless count coming up at the end of the month as well, and there's training available for folks if they want to get involved with that.
There is indeed, and a lot of folks turn out to help and make sure they're trying to support the homeless folks. And so that happens the end of this month, I believe. And so if you're interested, you can contact the Community Action Agency who leads that.
Commissioner Bednarz.
I just wanted to say last year, last January, my wife and I participated in the homeless count, and it was, it's an interesting day. It's a real interesting day at both ends, not only just meeting the people, but also going through the process and the information that they want to gather. And it's specific, but not where you would have to worry about losing your identity of the information that's collected. So, and it's kind of interesting.
That's correct. And one of the challenges there is the methodology kind of changes year to year subtly. HUD might change it year to year, and so you're never certain you're getting apples and oranges year after year. So that's one of the challenges.
And that is open to anyone, any member of the public as well, to participate in. If folks want to do that, they could contact their commissioner as well, and we can point them in the right direction, or they can give a holler to the Salem Housing Authority. Any other discussion? Commissioner Anderson.
Thank you very much. Have we voted on the consent calendar?
No, we have not yet.
Okay, because we're moving into Item 3.4A and B. And I've got some questions on that, but I think I want to wait till we pass the consent calendar.
Those two items are part-
Three is the consent calendar.
That's information reports.
But it's still part of the consent calendar in the Housing Authority.
Okay. We're consenting to the information? Then if I could, I ask a question on 3.4A. Director Wilch, I'm interested, well, first of all, this sounds like exactly what we've been talking about in past meetings, that we're waiting for HUD to come up with their changes so we can up our housing allowance to voucher amount. And I can see that we've done that, although it's not by a whole lot by looking at it. But I'm wondering if you could tell, give a little explanation about what the success rate payment standard is.
Let me find that.
That's on page two of your facts and findings. Second paragraph under facts and findings.
I think success rate is kind of a misnomer in this case. It's not about being successful. It's about not being successful, and therefore easing the regs to allow a little bit higher payment standard in jurisdictions, for instance, like Salem right now, where rents are continually going up, and our clients can't find rental housing that meets the quality standards as well as the price standards.
That's sort of what I thought. I didn't, it didn't make any sense to me, but with that explanation, it does. You know, our success rate is if we can get more people into the housing, and we get more people into the housing by increasing the amount that's available to them with the vouchers.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lewis.
Andy, I have one question. It's about the count. Counting the homeless has to be difficult enough. Counting the homeless that don't want to be counted has to be impossible. So what is done about that? I'm curious what percentage, it has to be an estimate. What percentage of folks do you estimate that just, I mean, the date is publicized, so they take the day off, go somewhere that's, so they're not counted. What percentage is that? Do you guess?
I don't really have that information, per se. There might be others that are more on the ground and closer to it to give us a percentage. I can certainly find that out. But you are absolutely correct, that there's a lot of homeless and currently homeless and people, families at risk of being homelessness that don't want to be counted and aren't going to be counted for a whole host of reasons that are theirs and theirs alone. But, so, it's not a perfect model. And HUD does try to structure the counts in such a way that they maximize the count of real individuals, but I don't think it's always completely accurate. What it really is, is a benchmark to start from and have some sense. There might be more individuals that aren't counted, but the 1607, I believe, from last year is a pretty substantial number. And so it kind of marks that there is an issue, and it might be undercounting slightly, but there is an issue.
Any further discussion? With that, all those in favor of the consent calendar as presented, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimously. No special order of business, no unfinished business, no new business. And with that, we will adjourn and reconvene the, not reconvene, but convene the Urban Renewal Agency presently.
Okay. I'm going to call to order this evening's meeting of the Urban Renewal Agency for the City of Salem for January 11th, 2016. Would the recorder please call the roll?
Board Member Bennett?
Here.
Board Member Anderson?
President.
Board Member Nanki?
Here.
Board Member McCoy?
Here.
Board Member Dickey?
Here.
Board Member Benjamin?
Here.
Board Member Bednarz?
Here.
Board Member Lewis?
Here.
Chair Peterson?
Here. Thank you. It's our pleasure this evening to introduce the new Director of the Salem Urban Renewal, City of Salem Urban Renewal Department. I'd like our City Manager, Steve Powers, to make the introduction.
Yes, thank you. Kristen Rutherford is our new Urban Development Director. Kristen comes to us from Wilsonville and has considerable experience with economic and urban development in the region, in the state level. And I am thrilled that she's joining us, and I look forward to great things from her and her competent assistance to you and the leadership of our competent urban development staff. Thank you.
Welcome. Would you like to say a few words?
I just want to say thank you, and it is a pleasure to be on board. I have been very busy getting out and meeting different boards and commissions, commissioners, and counselors, and stakeholders throughout the community, and will continue to do so over the next few months as I learn about Salem. And I'm very, very excited about the opportunities that I see here. I have just dove right in, and I am loving it. I've loved every moment so far. Yeah, thank you.
Wonderful. Well, welcome aboard. We are very pleased to have you and looking forward to working very closely with you to really strengthen our city's economic development platform and all of our urban development activities. Thank you. Okay. I would like our Council President to have a motion for approval of additions or deletions to the agenda, if there are any.
There are no additions, deletions to the agenda, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. We have no reports from boards or commissions. Do we have anyone signed up for public comment? No. All right, we're just breezing right along. I will then turn to Council President Brad Nanki for the consent calendar.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would move the consent calendar with the following poll, 4.2A by Member Dickey.
All right. It's been moved by Member--
Second.
Thank you. I was just trying to say, thank you very much. I was going to say, moved by Member Brad Nanki, and now seconded by Member Diana Dickey. All those, are there any questions? Is there anything on the consent calendar you want to go over?
The only thing that's left on the consent calendar are two sets of meeting minutes.
All right. Thank you. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. All right. Under special orders of business, then, we will address the issue 4.2A. Counselor Dickey, would you like to make a motion?
Yes, I'll move staff recommendation.
Second.
It's been moved by Member Dickey and seconded by Member Nanki to, excuse me, to approve the motion. Is there discussion? Yes, Member Dickey.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I do have a question about this, because this is, seems like a new thing that we have. And just reading the staff report, it talks about, the reason why we would pass this resolution is because marijuana is still prohibited federally. And so even though it's legal in Oregon, if we were to use our urban renewal funds for something that's prohibited federally, that could jeopardize our funds. What I'm wondering is, so the staff report states, we don't actually have like a more blanket resolution that says we don't offer urban renewal funds for things that are prohibited by federal law. So marijuana is one of those. Are there other situations where that could potentially be an issue?
Dan Atchison, City Attorney. If I understand the question, is it, you're asking if there's other potential violations of federal law that we would be funding?
Well, I'm not, no, I'm not suggesting that we're funding anything right now. I'm just wondering, I mean, this has come up, you know, it's been something that we've been discussing for quite some time, but it sounds like we don't have a policy in place for anything else that could potentially violate federal law, that could jeopardize our urban renewal funds. I'm just wondering, you know, is there a potential for that?
Not really. The current practice that staff has implemented through the guidelines is that if they'll review an application, whether it's Toolbox or some other type of funding mechanism, and if it violates the law, they obviously wouldn't do it. If it violates the zoning code, or it violates another provision of state law or federal law, they wouldn't authorize the use of grant or loan funding for it. In this case, because there's the conflict between state and federal law, and we have had circumstances come up in the past in other rural areas where folks have asked for funding for marijuana-based activities, where we've had to check with the federal government to see if that would jeopardize a potential loan, which is different than just straight urban renewal funding, of course. But since the issue's come up, because we now have the direct conflict, we thought it was appropriate to bring this forward as we did with the City Council last year.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Are there any further questions or further discussion on that item? All right, there is a motion on the floor to adopt the staff recommendation. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Motion carries with one no, and that's Member Dickey. Thank you. All right. I see no other, any other business to come before us. We have no public hearing and no new business, so this meeting of the Urban Renewal Agency is adjourned. 11th, 2015. Would the recorder please call the roll?
Counselor Bennett?
Here.
Counselor Anderson?
Here.
Counselor Nanki?
Here.
Counselor McCoy?
Here.
Counselor Dickey?
Here.
Counselor Benjamin?
Here.
Counselor Bednarz?
Here.
Counselor Lewis?
Here.
Mayor Peterson?
Here. Thank you. I see that we do have additions, so Counselor Nanki, would you please move for approval of additions and deletions?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would move approval of additions, deletions, revisions to the agenda for January 11th, 2016.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved by Counselor Nanki and seconded by Counselor Bednarz to move the additions approval, to approve the additions and deletions to the agenda. Counselor Nanki, would you like to itemize those for us, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, I would. First off is, we're adding the election of a council president, which is in our rules to do on the first meeting of the year. Secondly, we had a change to the Oregon Department of Transportation Local Agency Certification Program Agreement that was rectified. We had a error on page 12. And then we have a couple of pieces of testimony for the public hearing that will take place later in the meeting as well.
All right. Thank you. Are there any questions regarding the additions or corrections to the agenda? All right. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. We will now move to the election of our council president. And Counselor Nanki, do you have a motion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would move that Council elect Counselor Steve McCoy as president for 2016.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved by Counselor Nanki and seconded by Counselor Bednarz to elect Counselor Steve McCoy as council president for 2015. Is there discussion?
16.
16, I'm sorry. 2016. Ooh.
I'd just like to say it's dangerous when people retire, so Steve has the extra time now.
But you're still going to be here.
I'll be right here next to him.
You'll be right here next to him. Absolutely.
I hope not as well.
All right. Thank you. All right. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. I'd like to say thank you so much to Counselor Nanki for your year of service as council president. You've always been right, my right hand, my left hand, as we've been going through these meetings, and I know you've been very supportive of all counselors, and very diligent in the extra work that comes to that role. Appreciate all the phone calls you've made, week after week, month after month. Appreciate all of the work that you've done.
Thank you very much.
Good job. Well done. And I'd like to welcome Steve McCoy to this position. I'm so fortunate that you were willing to serve, that you are willing to serve. I know it's going to be a great year. I know that you will bring the same kind of communication and collegiality to the council.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Looking forward to it.
All right. Would you like to say a word or two? Catch on the spot?
Where were you born, Steve?
Hey, well, watch out. You shouldn't give an Irish guy the microphone, but in a meeting. No, I'm honored and flattered, Mayor, that you called and asked me to do this. And you are right, you know, it's three months since I retired. I got the time to do it. I'm more than willing to do it. I'm here to serve the city, so I'm very much looking forward to this. And working with a really, I think, great council. We get along together. We treat each other with respect and dignity, listen to each other's issues, and either agree unanimously, or listen, have our vote, and move on, and don't carry any grudges or concerns about a vote that you didn't win or lose, or you lost. So I'm really pleased and blessed to be working here with these folks, and to serve as their president for years is something I didn't expect, but I certainly look forward to. Now, the downside, I would say, since I retired three months ago, this morning is the earliest I've gotten up in three months. So that is probably the downside of this thing.
You joined us for pre-council this morning, so yeah, get used to it. Wonderful. Thank you. Congratulations. Good for all of us. All right. Our next item agenda is always a special time. We have a few minutes for council and city manager comment. I'd like to take the prerogative to start, to open, on a somber note, I would like to recognize a former city counselor, Dave Moss. His formal name was James Davidson Moss. Dave Moss passed on December 28th, 2015. And I wanted to take a few minutes because he served this city valiantly and in a much dedicated manner, not only as on the city council for five years, but he was on the Budget Committee for four years, he was on the Cable Regulatory Commission in 1999, he was president of city council in 1990, he chaired the Budget Committee. He also served in the community, serving on the boards for Gilbert House, for the hospice, and as a volunteer, always was cleaning storm drains. Now, this was a person who, at a high level on the city council and in the community, never thought twice of, let's just stoop down, clean out the drains, get that going. He often was seen with his very dear friends, two other gentlemen, picking up cans as they walked around Busch Park and downtown streets. And the money from those cans was put into a fund, and that funded projects for students in elementary and middle schools. And one middle school in particular, I apologize, I don't have that name in front of me. He truly was a leader and a dedicated servant for Salem. And I'd like to ask for just a moment of silence. Now, do other counselors have comments this evening? Counselor Anderson, followed by Counselor Bennett?
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor.
Followed by Counselor Dickey.
I'd like to add, in the spirit of what Council President McCoy said about Mr. Moss, I had dealings with him when I was the president of the SCAN Neighborhood Group, and we were on the opposite sides of an issue that came before the city council. And despite the fact that we were on opposite sides, we were cordial and collegial with each other, and I appreciated that very much in working with Mr. Moss. You know, we're, I'm sorry, we're talking about this, but I'm going to continue that because, as you know, in the past months, I have named the people pedestrians in the city of Salem who have been killed in pedestrian auto accidents. And unfortunately, we had another one on December 30th. The woman's name was Rebecca Schoff, and she was killed at the corner of Mission and Ford across from the Dutch Brothers Coffee there. And that's, the Ford there jogs going from south to north. And it's a difficult stretch of the road, but nevertheless, she was there, and she had the right to be there, and she's no longer here with us. So I want to mention that, and that's specifically appropriate in terms of the information item we're going to have later on in the agenda. And Chief Moore, I was speaking to him earlier today, and he indicated that there's, had been another death in Salem, a traffic death in Salem, that wasn't included in his original report because it was investigated by the state police out on the Parkway. But, so, we've got an additional death to the ones we have, and that should be of a great concern to all of us here in Salem. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Bennett?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to thank you for your remarks regarding Dave Moss. He was a longtime friend and colleague, and I know we will all miss him very much. He was somebody I spoke with regularly about city business, and found him very helpful and really thoughtful. And then one of the things he taught me was, when a constituent or group of constituents start calling, you ought to probably ask a question. So I'm going to, in the spirit of my friend Dave, follow up with that advice. As you recall, Madam Mayor, last year, we passed a motion regarding the North Campus and the city's interest particularly in the park parcel. They're about seven acres in the northwest corner of the, of the park, or of the campus over there between, it's the old north part of the state hospital grounds, between D and Center and 25th or so and Park. And one of the, the calls began coming in, I think there has been some concern on the city's activities relative to proceeding on gaining, gaining that piece of park property, if it's available, and we're interested in acquiring it under the terms it's offered. It was part of a motion that the council approved last year that I made, and I wanted to follow up on it just to make sure that we're having conversations with the state on that. The word we're getting from some of the interested parties in this is that the city may not have made its interests clear. And I've spoken with staff about it, and they're prepared to just answer that, I hope, to kind of clarify where we stand, if you don't mind.
Oh, that would be excellent. Because people have asked me as well, so.
Kristen Rutherford, Urban Development Director. Yes, staff is in conversation with the AS representatives about acquisition of this property. The most recent conversation occurred last week.
They are working through what the next steps will be so that we can continue to move forward on this.
All right. Okay. Anything you want to add?
Great, thank you. I thought that was probably the situation. I hope, as you're working on this, if there's any need for legislative action, that you'll contact our Legislative Committee, and we will talk with our lobbyists about it as well, so that we can be of assistance on this too as counselors. Thank you.
Excellent. Counselor Dickey?
Thank you, Mayor. So it's been a while since we've met, and one of the things I did on my Christmas vacation was to hear a presentation about what Catholic Charities is doing to help resettle refugees into the Salem area. It was fascinating. I mean, there's been a lot of news about refugees, and it's been somewhat of a controversial issue, but Catholic Charities has been resettling refugees into the Salem and Portland area for quite some time, several years now. So this is not necessarily related to what you're seeing on the nightly news. But last year, they resettled a family from, I think they were from the Democratic Republic of the Congo, and they resettled them here. They helped them, helped get the kids in school, helped them learn English, helped them find jobs. And so that's what they do when they bring families, they help them find a place to live. So it's not just bringing them here, but offering, you know, connecting them to resources, helping them get on their feet as quickly as they possibly can. This year, they are planning to bring about 50 individuals into the Salem area from all places, so it's not just coming from one area. But they are, next Wednesday, January 20th, they're having a community forum to talk about planning for bringing those people into the area, identifying resources, and enlisting volunteers who might be willing to help with that effort. And it's going to be at 7:00 Wednesday, January 20th, at the library, the Anderson Room, at the library. So I thought I would just bring that to your attention. It's just, it's a fascinating program. I'm hoping some, at some point, I can get their director to come and just talk to the city council and let us know what exactly they're doing, because they're doing something that's just going under the radar. People aren't really aware of it, but they're helping people connect and get on their feet.
Wonderful. Good news. Thank you. Other comment from counselors? Counselor McCoy?
It's been so long. I'm not sure if this is before or after our last meeting, but I think it was after. I went to, the first time as a counselor, to the Christmas tree lighting down at the park, Riverfront Park. Great fun, great crowd. It was really well done. Santa did arrive on a hook and ladder truck, you know. I think he should have been up there in the chair somewhere, but he wasn't. But we had a standing room only crowd. People out there had to get chocolate chip cookies and cocoa, and the mayor did a great job emceying it. Little girl got to switch the light, to turn on the lights. And the tree's getting big enough now. It's pretty impressive. So all in all, for those of you that didn't attend, it's a good way to start the season. Really enjoyed it.
Great, thank you. And thanks to our park staff for all the work they did to prepare the park and the tree as well. I know Public Works were stringing lights, et cetera, and even on trees adjacent to our holiday, our Christmas tree. And I really thought that added tremendously. our holiday, our Christmas tree, and I really thought that added tremendously to the park. Looked lovely. Other council comment? Councillor Benars?
Again, on the same note of, geez, been back far enough, is this the right time and place? But I wanted to thank the Public Works Department over our last little ice storm that we had that, I know personally speaking, I can get around in snow no matter what, but the ice, that kept me at home, and that's a bad time for the whole city and the whole community to just hunker down. And from what I've heard, from at least from the officials at Salem Electric, they said they actually fared fairly well, at least for Salem Electric. I have not heard anything from PGE. But I want to thank whoever it is that goes out there and dumps all that sand on the road, and I know you're cleaning it up. I've seen the sites, those temporary sites, to pick up the gravel that was put out. But say thank you to the Public Works Department.
Right. Peter Fernandez, would you like to tell us a little bit about how all of that was orchestrated?
Thank you, Mayor. Peter Fernandez, Public Works Director. The city of Salem subscribes to about three different weather services that provide local micro forecasts for the area. So this time of year, Bruce Hildebrand, who is our street supervisor, monitors those very carefully, and the crews are ready to go at the drop of a hat. So often, they are called in at midnight, at 2:00 in the morning, to start de-icing or sanding, or whatever needs to be done. And it's a very small crew that does this. Often, we think they're akin to the RAF in the Battle of Britain, you know, the very few fight off the ice and the snow. But those, and I think at this point, they're all gentlemen, but they all do a tremendous job for us, and we really appreciate it, and they are ready, willing, and able to do this 24 hours a day. So we're delighted when we're able to get the de-icer down, and sometimes we get it down ahead of time, if it's not raining, so it'll sit there and work. If it starts to rain, then we've got to go to the gravel. And then the gravel has to be picked up as soon as the event passes, because we have stormwater permit issues, so we try and pick it up just as quickly as we can. And I know bicyclists call often, because the gravel accumulates on bike lanes, and we try to pick it up as fast as we can, and we know it's a hazard for bicyclists. So we're aware, we're working as fast as we can. There's, you know, there's only two sweepers, so they have to come out and pick it up just as quickly as we can.
Well, they must have been working extra fast, because I sense that they got things cleaned up very quickly.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks to everybody. Okay, other councillor comment? I'd like to turn to our city manager for comment. Welcome. You know, you've been here now, this is your third meeting.
Third meeting, yes.
All right. I get to be an old hand at this.
Well, just to build upon the last discussion, during the snow and ice event, we found that our traffic cameras were a very popular spot on the website. So if we have future events, hopefully not snow or ice, but flooding or other weather events that could impact our roads, the 22 traffic cameras are available for view on our Salem homepage at www.cityofsalem.net, under the emergencies tag in the upper-right corner.
Wonderful. I don't think we quite realized that.
If councillors or residents want to get a bird's-eye view of 22 of our traffic locations, please go to that site. And then a reminder, on the 13th of this month, there's a budget committee meeting, starting at 6:00 in this room.
To be reminded of that. Thank you, everyone, for your comments. Do we have public comment? Do we have people signed up? We do. All right, good. Starting off the new year, I would like to call Jeffrey James and then Carol Snyder.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening. Welcome.
Jeff James, Ward 3. And I, staff handed out a sketch that I did today, just to make sure that the police facility fits on one of the preferred sites, but I don't have time in my three minutes to talk about it, so if you have any questions, let me know. I, as you know, this is Agenda Item 9.1 that we're covering later, 9.1A. And as you know, I'm a fiscal conservative, I'm very desperately keen on making sure that we pass this police facility. We urgently need it, so we can't afford to go off track. And I wondered if we could get Jake, our consultant in Chicago, copies of a couple of documents. Copy of the task force recommendations. I served on that task force, and we recommended that the sites be minimum four acres. Half of the sites that Jake came up with do not meet that criteria, and I'm concerned that that's going to mean an expensive parking structure, which I compute is about $12 million. And then a copy to Jake of the poll we commissioned on the public acceptance of, which said that only something like 40% of the public that were polled would support a, I think they were asked to comment on the $80 million, $75,000 square foot building that was proposed last time. So Jake needs to know there's, the cost is a criteria there. Right now, we're giving him a blank check to come up with the ideal supersized facility, but I don't think we can afford the supersized facility. If you, if we had difficulty before with the normal sized that we've had for a few years, and we suddenly double the size, then are we going to pass a bond? I think we need to consider, and I mentioned this at the committee, alternative financing. If the bond measure fails, I was consultant to the county on the Courthouse Square in 1986, and we brought in Bob Moore, the city manager, retired city manager, to recommend certificates of participation, which is like municipal bonds. And they, so they got $34 million financed, the county pays $1.5 million a year. So as a budget member, I know that's tough to find $1.5 million out of the budget. But there's a third alternative, and I think that's the winning solution. I talked to the seller of the Delon property, and they're willing to consider a long-term lease. Now, the state police is a long-term lease. They built that, Dalkey is building that for $190 a square foot.
Excuse me, I need to draw your attention, your three minutes is up.
Okay, I'll wrap it up.
Can you sum up quickly?
Yeah. I think I recommend that you, on the 21st, talk seriously about this proposal from the subcommittee to supersize or double the size, and therefore the cost of the facility, because I'm really anxious about whether we can sell that bond measure.
All right, thank you. Thank you, your time is up. Okay, thank you very much.
Any questions?
Are there questions? Councillor Anderson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. James, you talked about a poll that we did. Who is "we"?
The city of Salem commissioned a poll. I think Courtney would be the best source of getting copies of that to the consultant.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Carol Snyder, followed by Ken Adams.
I'm Carol Snyder, and I live in Ward 7. And I'm just here once again to talk about the sports field that Councillor Bennett brought up. I'm representing a group called the Friends of D Street Field. We're a group of Salem citizens who are advocating that the open field at the corner of 23rd and D continue to be available for recreation, preferably as a Salem City Park. And I was pleased to know that we're still considering purchasing that parcel, but I also realized that some of you might like to have all of the acreage that is the North Campus to become taxable real estate. And I do get that. Being the state capital and the county seat, we have a lot of prime real estate within our boundaries that is not taxable. And here, we have this big chunk available, nearly 50 acres, that could provide more revenue. And we certainly need more revenue. We need to fix our streets and fix our sidewalks, and hire more police officers, and hire more firefighters, and prepare for emergencies, and expand our library hours, and, dear to my heart, develop some of our undeveloped park property. So yes, I would like much of that property to be taxable as well. But it makes no sense to me that we take a field that has been used for decades by our citizens for active recreation, used essentially as a city park, an already developed city park with low maintenance requirements, that we might invite someone to build houses on that park, so we can have revenue to develop some other park. And that logic escapes me. So I'm just here to beg of you one more time not to allow that. Please don't be the council that loses this field. Please find out what the state is willing to sell it to us for, and then make it a Salem City Park.
Thank you. Just as a point of order, I want to draw your attention and the attention of the councillor, this was not an item on tonight's agenda, and even though it was brought up by a councillor, it was not an item on tonight's agenda. So I certainly let you go ahead and speak, but otherwise, you would be coming at the very end of the meeting for items that are not on the agenda.
I did clarify that with Councillor Bennett, and he said it with, yeah, I'm sorry.
Well, that's the rule. That's the rule. Okay, thank you. We do try to keep the meeting going in an organized fashion. Thank you. Ken Adams, followed by Kendra Porter.
Yes, my name is Ken Adams, and I live at 1695 Chameca Street. And I moved here in 2007 and have a front-row seat to some of the problems that pedestrians have in this town. One of our sight-impaired citizens was hit at that corner, and I was one of the first people out there. I thought for sure he was dead, okay? And I have seen numerous times, people cannot cross 17th, because nobody will stop. This is in pouring rain, I saw, one of the things that really brought this home to me was there were two women with strollers in the rain trying to get home, nobody would stop, and they are not about to push the baby carriage out in front of them to enter the intersection. And I remember asking Councilman Bennett to see if we could have some pedestrian safety measures, and they did, the police did come by one time and do a kind of a survey about who was going through this intersection, but that was one time. I will also point out that the Public Works Department told me originally they did not want to put a pedestrian light up there, because it would slow down traffic. I'm sorry, this is a problem, I think. And one of the things that's happening is that there's, where the crosswalk is on the south side of the intersection, is that front curb has been hit so many times, they moved the sign from that curb back next to the tree that they planted about three, four years ago. That sign, right now, today, is at about a 45-degree angle, because somebody hit the tree without hitting the curb. This has become a huge problem. This is, Chameca is one of these streets where pedestrians, bicyclists, and a lot of people go to get down to the Capitol and other places where they work downtown. And I think it's about time that we started taking pedestrian safety seriously in this town. And if it means slowing down the traffic, that's what we need to do. If it means more police enforcement about people using their cell phones while they're driving, I think that's something that's long overdue. I see this happen many times when I'm driving down Court Street, where we do have a light there to slow people down. I've seen people, almost hit people with the light flashing, because they're on their phone. So thank you. Anybody have any questions?
Thank you very much. Are there questions of councillors? Councillor Bennett?
Yeah, Mr. Adams, I really appreciate you coming down and talking about this. This is, as you know, an ongoing problem all along 17th, all along Market, all along Commercial, all along Court, all along. I think you-
But this is where my front window is, so I get to see it firsthand.
Did you have a chance to read the report yet, that was in the council agenda?
No, I have not.
I really, we're going to talk about it later, but I'm going to really strongly recommend that you and others, who, anyone, I think, in the community, should take a very close look at that report and what it tells you about, at least in the case of the fatalities and some of the other issues that are going on in this area. It's very interesting, and I would really look forward to your thoughts in the future, after you've had a chance to read that. I think it's instructive, and it's troubling, and it would help me to hear some more from you on it.
Well, I will say that I did call in the city police department on December 18th, because twice within about a 20-minute period, pedestrians were almost hit at the intersection. And I didn't see the first one, I just heard the horns and somebody yelling at whoever would be, okay? The second time, I was watching, and it was somebody walking their bike across the intersection, this right about 5:00 in the evening on a Friday night. He had his, not only did he have his bike lights on, but he had a flashlight, and he still almost got hit. And I called in to the city police department, and they said, well, the traffic division has just closed down, because it was a few minutes now after 5:00. So I requested them to at least be alerted to the fact that there is a problem going on, because it gets darker earlier. You still have a lot of people that work and are getting off at 4:00 and 5:00, and trying to get through that intersection, and I really think it's very dangerous right now for people to try to cross.
Councillor Anderson?
Thanks also for coming down, Mr. Adams. I'm, I can't remember, but isn't there a marked crosswalk there at 17th and Chameca?
On the south side of the intersection, yes.
Okay, and even with the marked crosswalk, we're having-
Well, that's where they're hitting the curb, so they're obviously having a problem negotiating.
Okay, all right.
And I have been yelled at, because I cross on the north side usually. You're supposed to be in the crosswalk.
Yeah.
Well, an unmarked crosswalk counts the same as a marked one.
Sure, okay, thank you.
Well, I really appreciate you coming, and obviously, we're concerned too, and that's why we asked for this report from the police department, and we'll be studying this more thoroughly, but we appreciate your input as well, so.
Well, I was going to mention one more thing.
Day and two, yes.
They put in two no-left-hand-turn signs there, because now they've got the tree there, that is violated at least once an hour. And it's really amazing, because somebody put up a yard sign pointing that way. Three people in a row went down that street the wrong way, I mean, making a legal left turn, because they noticed the yard sign. They don't notice the no-left-turn sign.
Oh, dear. Okay, well, thank you again for coming to testify, we appreciate that. The next person on the list, Kendra Porter. And we were wondering, had you really wanted to sign up under a different category?
No. The skyline property.
The skyline property?
Yes.
Okay, I think we've got you down then for the public hearing. Right, thank you. Okay. Was there anyone else who wanted to make comment on agenda items that are on the agenda this evening and didn't get a chance to sign up? Okay, thank you very much. Moving along on our agenda this evening, it's time for the consent calendar. Councillor McCoy, this is your first action.
Oh, man, this is nerve-wracking.
You're ready.
I moved the consent calendar with the following polls, 3.3B and 3.3F by Councillor Anderson.
Okay, 3.3B and 3.3F by Councillor Anderson. All right. Were there any other polls? No, okay. It's been moved by Councillor McCoy and seconded by Councillor Benars to approve the consent calendar with those two polls, which will be discussed under Special Orders of Business. Is there any further discussion about the consent calendar?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to review the other items on the consent calendar that we're going to pass here with the vote. Do that now?
Yes.
3.2A was the appointment of members to the Mid-Wilamette Homeless Initiative and authorization to utilize city staff to provide support for the Mid-Wilamette Homeless Initiative. We've got an intergovernmental agreement to approve between the city of Salem and Chameca Community College for Cooperative Regional Library Service. We've got authorize, we're going to authorize staff to enter into agreement with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers and the Oregon Department of State Lands to implement a stream mitigation banking program. We've got Oregon Department of Transportation Local Agency Certification Program Agreement, renewal of Marion County Inmate Work Program Intergovernmental Agreement, and that's it.
All right. That's enough to keep us busy for a couple weeks, right?
Yeah.
I think so. All right. It's been moved by Councillor McCoy and seconded by Councillor Benars to adopt the consent calendar with the exception of the polls. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. We'll now move to public hearing, 4.0A. Would the recorder please introduce the hearing?
The city of Salem City Council will now hold a public hearing for the purpose of hearing an appeal on the hearing's officer decision denying a request for the zone change and conditional use. The criteria applicable to these consolidated applications are Salem Revised Code Section 240.005D and 265.005E1. The hearing will be conducted with staff presentation first, followed by the applicant, neighborhood association- neighborhood association, other interested persons, and applicant's rebuttal. Failure to raise an issue prior to the close of the public hearing in person or in writing or failure to provide statements or evidence with sufficient specificity to provide the applicant and the city council an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes an appeal to Land Use Board of Appeals on that issue. A similar failure to raise constitutional issues relating to proposed conditions of approval precludes an action for damages in Circuit Court. Following the close of the public hearing, a decision will be issued and mailed to the appellant, applicant, property owner, affected neighborhood associations, and anyone who participated in the hearing either in person or in writing, and anyone who requested to receive notice of the decision.
Thank you. And we have a staff report?
Yes.
Welcome.
Thank you and good evening, Mayor, members of council. My name is Aaron Fanko, planner with the Community Development Department. Tonight's case is an appeal of a zone change and conditional use for property at 4752 Liberty Road South and 152 through 172 Pembroke Street Southeast. And before getting into the details of the case tonight, I'd like to do a quick overview of our zoning code and how zones typically work. In the zoning code, there are chapters for each of our zones, industrial, retail, commercial, residential. Those chapters contain list of uses that are outright permitted, uses that require conditional use permit, and uses that are not allowed. Occasionally, conditions of approval are added to zone change cases which have the effect of limiting or restricting uses which the zoning code would otherwise allow. The property in question tonight is one of those cases. In 1997, there was a zone change approved for this property which included a use limitation condition that prohibits certain types of commercial uses and multifamily residential uses on the property. The applicant's request tonight includes a modification of that 1997 decision to allow the property to develop with multifamily use. So the request for a zone change and conditional use permit was received on September 2nd and was deemed complete shortly after. Following a public hearing, the hearings officer issued a decision denying the request on December 2nd, and appeal of the hearings officer decision was filed by the applicant. This vicinity map shows where the subject property is. It's at the intersection of two major arteries, Skyline Road and Liberty Road. The property is near some commercial services, Sunny Slope Shopping Center, and then Wendy Kroger Park abuts the property directly to the east. Liberty Elementary and Walgreens are other things that are right near the property. This is a zoning map of the property. The property's owned retail, commercial, as identified in the red. Abutting uses to the east are single-family residential. Pembroke Street also contains some multifamily residential on the north side and commercial office zoning. And this is a photo of the property taken in 1995. The property was used formerly as a cannery, actually, for a long time it was a cannery. In 1995, much of the cannery buildings had been removed at that point. And you could see that the site was used for motor vehicle storage. And the area in yellow roughly outlines where the property is. And today's photo, the last remaining portions of the cannery buildings have been removed. Walgreens has been developed. There's an existing commercial business right at the corner of Pembroke and Liberty. What you don't see on the aerial photo is a dental clinic that was completed within the last year. And then there's a storage facility that's directly abutting the property to the south. This is a photo taken from the property looking out towards the west. You can see the newly constructed dental office, Pembroke Street, and then there's residential uses that abut to the north. This photo was taken also at the property looking out to the major access point for where the proposed multifamily is sited. This intersection here is a signalized intersection at Liberty and Skyline. And then there's a photo looking to the south, Walgreens, you could see, and then there's that storage facility off to the left. In 1997, there was a zone change decision that was granted for this property and subject to a condition that limits the uses permitted on the easternmost 1.7 acres of the property. The uses are limited to those that are found in both the neighborhood commercial, CN Zone, and then the CR retail commercial zones. The applicant has requested to remove this use limitation because multifamily uses are prohibited in the CN Zone and would not be allowed on the easternmost 1.7 acres. Here again is that photo from 1995, which shows the property being used for motor vehicle storage. This use continued for several years after and may provide some context for why there was an effort to limit motor vehicle uses and other heavy-impact commercial uses on the site in 1997. But findings and testimony from that decision indicate the intent was to limit the higher-impact commercial-type uses from being developed specifically related to motor vehicle uses in order to assure that future uses are compatible with that surrounding area. Testimony at the time from the neighborhood association and the applicant also seemed to indicate that residential uses should be allowed and/or even preferred for this portion of the property. For these reasons, staff believes that it was never the intent to prohibit residential uses on the property. The hearings officer denied the applicant's request based on the opinion that the proposed multifamily development is not an appropriate or compatible use for this location. In his determination, the hearings officer placed significant weight on the intent statement of the CN Zone, which reads in part that this zone is generally intended to provide areas of small-scale retail, office, and service uses that are compatible with the scale and character of surrounding residential areas and that serve nearby residents. The hearings officer was not persuaded that was logical to ignore the benefits gained by small-scale commercial, retail, office, and service uses that could serve the adjacent neighborhood and therefore denied the proposed multifamily use. Staff believes that the hearings officer erred in this finding because the property is not so CN, it's so CR. So the intent statement and development standards the hearings officer cited are not applicable to this property. Staff believes to determine if a multifamily use is equally or better suited for this property, that it's appropriate to look at the goals and policies of the Comprehensive Plan for Multifamily Development. The Comprehensive Plan encourages multifamily residential development to be located in areas that provide walking, auto, and transit connections to employment centers, shopping areas, transit service, parks, and public buildings. As seen on the vicinity map, the subject property is located at a major intersection with pedestrian and transit access on Liberty Road to connect to nearby commercial services and employment. The property also abuts Wendy Kroger Park and is within the walk zone for Liberty Elementary School and Crossler Middle School. Staff believes that the property and location is suited well for multifamily use. Objections to the proposal were indicated by the Fayright Neighborhood Association and surrounding property owners. Major concerns with the development include a lack of privacy, amount of parking, and a desire to either eliminate or modify a pedestrian connection requirement along the north boundary of the property. So currently, there's no formal east-west connection between Pembroke Street and the neighborhood to the east with pedestrian access currently terminating at those areas you see at the red lines, at the end of Music, at the end of Pembroke, and actually at the park. Those all are terminate right now. That 1997 decision required the construction of a pedestrian connection to fill in those missing gaps when it was determined that Music Street was not going to go through when the property develops. And this conceptual plan here shows where that missing pedestrian link will be constructed. And staff supports maintaining this pedestrian connection. For the privacy and parking concerns, if the applicant receives approval for the multifamily use, they will be required to go through site plan review and design review prior to development. The multifamily design standards require a greater building setback and more landscaping than would be required for a commercial use on the same property. The minimum off-street parking requirement for multifamilies, 1.5 spaces per dwelling unit, and the conceptual plan here shows an off-street parking area that exceeds those minimum requirements. So staff believes that the subject property is suited for a multifamily use and recommends that the council reverse the decision of the hearings officer subject to the recommended conditions of approval. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, we have people signed up for our hearing. We will start with the applicant. So do we have the applicant?
Which one is the applicant? Mark Granz.
Oh, okay, thank you. Mark Granz. And Mr. Granz, welcome. I understand you have 10 minutes.
My technical...
Okay, well, your technical time won't count. We'll get you set up here.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council.
Can you pull the microphone down and speak right in?
I can.
As loud as you can because, you know, it doesn't work great.
Just make it point to your mouth and they'll figure it out. And I apologize, I wear hearing aids, so I hear me very well.
Right.
That seems to be a common failing in mine at meetings is I don't talk very loud because I'm fine. But as I said, my name is Mark Granz and we are the project planners and engineers that represent the applicant in this matter. And our office is located at 1155 13th Street Southeast in Salem. There are a few new faces on the council here, but many of you have seen me before you on similar issues dealing with multifamily. We put together a concept plan and talked to staff early on about putting a multifamily project on this site. This is our concept plan. It is one that staff has in their possession, but it's not exactly the one that's in the staff report, but it's very similar. We're proposing 90 units on this site with a recreational facility that would be located on site. And then we have 193 parking spaces proposed on here. And our intention is to, excuse me, 160, apologies, 160, I'm dyslexic sometimes too, so. 163 parking spaces on here. And we are proposing to, that when we develop the site, that we'll limit access to Pembroke to be only through emergency vehicle, and it'll be gated. And the intention is to have access be serviced off of the signalized intersection that's out there at Liberty, at Skyline. We wanted to include a few pictures here so that you get a chance to see some of the construction materials and techniques that our client uses in the construction of his buildings. This is a recreational facility that very much matches the one that would go on the site, so you can see the types of materials and the manner with which this is put together so that's attractive. This is a photo of the interior of the type of apartments that we're building in Salem today. This is this particular client, this is what he builds. It's likely that councils may not have had an opportunity to be inside some of the newer apartments that are being constructed today so that you can see what they really are like. These apartments have air conditioning, they have hardwood floors, they have granite countertops, they have real wood cabinets, they are stainless steel appliances. These are what the market has put apartments to today in order to meet the needs of the current apartment dweller, which is not what we would typically have seen in the past. Today, apartment dwellers are a different makeup in their nature. We see a lot of people moving into apartments that have been in homes, doing it by choice because they decided they'd rather be in an environment where they call somebody when the light goes out instead of having to deal with it and don't have that outside maintenance responsibilities. And the apartments are nice. They are similar features that you find in a lot of homes today. This is the area where our site is located, and it's similar to the photos that staff put up for you. I'll get my pointer here. So this is the site, this is the story, this is Walgreens, this is the new dental clinic, and the mailbox is out there in the residential area around it. I've imposed, superimposed our apartment site on that so you can see how that fits in. Again, that's similar to what staff has done. One of the nice things that we liked about this site and thought that what we were asking to do was very appropriate, given the things that council has learned from your recently completed Economic Needs and Housing Needs Report that has came before you a month or so ago, is that there are some siding criteria that were set out there that the consultant recommended. Being adjacent to park, which this site is, or being near parks so that you have those facilities available to you. Near school, and as staff pointed out, we're in walking distance to elementary school and middle school. That we have a signalized intersection, so we have a good opportunity for traffic to maneuver without impeding adjoining streets. We have a bus stop that's right there at the intersection, so we have ready access to transit. We have shopping that's available in the area, not just small shopping, but we have Roths and the stuff at the Sunny Slope Shopping Center. And we have numerous churches and other things that are in the area. So we have all the things that the siding criteria set out as being appropriate, and we felt that this would be a good place to do that. Now, we pointed, we noted to you that our parking, number of parking spaces there, so we exceed the minimum number of parking spaces on this site by about 16%. And that was in part because we knew that neighbors were concerned about parking out there. And there have been some, many of our clients have spent quite a bit of time trying to develop what the good parking ratio is for apartments. And 1.8, 1.75 to 1.8 parking spaces per unit has been deemed to be the ideal target. And we're, with 90 units, we're at 1.81, so we fit well in that arena. And then one of the other things that's nice about where we are is we have some restaurant and food service things that are close to us too, so that's good. So we think that this is a good fit for what Salem needs. Again, this is our site with the parking spaces that we set out there. And then one of the issues that staff pointed out and we heard at the public hearing before was concern about the ability to fence or to separate this project from the adjoining residential neighborhood to the north. And so there's a, we're proposing and staff recommends too that we fence that property there. And our recommendation would be that the connection there at the end of Music for pedestrian, that council consider not having a pedestrian connection into the pedestrian path that we would build from Pembroke down to the park. There is a pedestrian connection from that residential area to the park that comes by way of the cul-de-sac and out, so you don't really need that connection. And that would alleviate some of the concerns that the neighbors had had about the tendency for maybe someone to try to park in the neighborhood and then walk back into our area. And that would short-circuit that and make that an unlikely scenario. Another concern that the neighbors talked about was an issue of privacy. And to the hearings officer, we had offered that this is a normal, what a two-story apartment would setback adjacent to the property. We established a line of sight with a standard six-foot fence and landscaping to show how far, well, what we're trying to show here is essentially how much area is screened off in the rear of the home site adjacent to the fence from a two-story that sets back 20. We propose to the hearings officer and we offer here tonight to construct an eight-foot fence along the property line and to plant 12-foot more mature trees adjacent to that fence in order to increase the screening between us and the neighbors. What that does is if we go three-story, and of course with three-story, we have to setback further because it's one-to-one to the height of the building. And then by the time you put in the 12-foot tree and the eight-foot fence, then you can see that more of the rear yard is screened off from view than would be otherwise. And then, of course, if you had a commercial facility here, you could have a commercial building that sets 15 feet off the property line, and it could be 50 feet tall. So that's what could be in the commercial zone, that's what could be in this area here. And then... And then one of the things that was talked about by the neighbors was the fear that our three-story buildings would cast a shadow into their backyard. And if you, because of the orientation of our buildings and this property line that's there is a east-west property line in the way the sun moves across here, this is an angle of declination for sunlight that generally would come across our building and you can see how far the shadow would come out. If you had a 50-foot tall building that's at 15 feet off the line, the shadow would encroach into the neighbors' property by coffee, but under our proposal here, we would, our shadow wouldn't encroach beyond the property line. So we're attempting to show you how we, that we believe we aren't creating that issue with them. And then this is one of the options that we talked about with the hearings officer that again is for council to look at would be fear of the pedestrian path back here adjacent to the property, so no path would be one option to not have there. Staff is still recommending the pathway be there. Our proposal would be if the path is going to be in place, that we still put the eight-foot fence, we put the mature trees, we move the pathway in and then we would put a short, like a three-foot or four-foot open, not a side obscuring chain link fence, but open fence in order to provide clarity as to where the public pathway section is to be, but not to create a screening that would encourage less desirable activities to take place so that you, our residents would be able to see across here, they still have that feeling of openness against the landscaping, we'd have good lighting that transmitted in here and that path wouldn't be dark and wouldn't be hidden. So we think that that's a good option to consider if that path is going to be put in place. That's the end of the slides I had. I do want to note that what we found in this area right now, and we have many clients that we do apartments for, is that it's been reported statewide that Oregon has a 3% vacancy factor for multifamily and usually anything under five is considered pretty much zero. Salem's vacancy rate is just a little bit lower than that and all of the apartments that we, that our clients have brought online in the last two years have all filled up immediately and they have waiting lists for them today. And in fact, we have a couple of clients that have older units who have been able to increase their rent because the demand for their units is up so much and they're full, so they're not waiting either. So as you've heard and as our clients see, there's a need, we're trying to provide a way for that need. You know that we've taken apartment properties and moved them out on the fringe in order to try to find a place and a way to do apartments that didn't intrude on anybody, but when you get on those fringes, what we find is we don't have transit, we don't have pedestrian, we have to build some of those things and you remember the struggle we had on pedestrian paths on one of those, so.
Your time is up. Your time is up, so actually, we do questions now? Okay, we'll do questions right now and then there will be other testimony following yours. Counselor Lewis, then Counselor Bednarz, then Counselor Anderson.
So the zone was changed in 97, doesn't look like there's been a whole lot of commercial takers, doesn't look like there's gonna be. That's something that I think we know, but if there were, how intense of a development, a commercial development under the existing code or codes, how intense of a development could you do or can you speak to that?
Well, I can only speak in a general sense to that. As we, our client provided some written information that was made available to you today that talked about the fact that there hasn't been any commercial takers. This property's been on the market for a long time. As a matter of fact, a bank had to take it back from the developer that was trying to do it. What the intent, as I understand it, was trying to achieve with the commercial neighborhood zoning was to put smaller scale commercial uses in there, so they'd be, oh, see, if you thought about it, they'd be, they could be such things as a sandwich shop, a deli, those types of things, small commercial office or retail shops would go there. What the zone doesn't limit is the height, which is what we tried to point out, you could have a 50-foot tall building and still have low intensity type uses, it could be office or something like that that would be there. So we didn't do a commercial layout on this site, so I don't have any specifics to know just how dense or what, how well you could do it.
Would the current codes allow things like a light commercial and then residential on the top, true mixed-use development?
I don't, I don't, your staff could probably better address that. I think the way it was worded was resident, because the CN residential was prohibited, so I don't think he could do a mixed-use type development there, but staff could probably better address that.
All right, Counselor Bednarz.
Yeah, I had just a couple of questions. First off, on page four of the report, you mentioned, here it mentions 147 parking stalls are being proposed. You mentioned in your testimony that it was 163 and I see that, I'm just trying to make sure, what's the correct number?
Yeah, we did provide, we did provide staff and before we went to the hearings officer, an updated site plan that had 90 units instead of 93 and had more parking spaces. And you noticed in the text there that staff points out the difference and that the narrative for our request spelled out that there was 90 apartment units yet, that the conceptual plan had 93. So right now, our plan that we have has 90 units and has the 161 parking spaces, which again, we knew that, we knew that staff was, or that the neighbors were concerned and as is our client about the number of parking spaces that are available.
So to clarify, if required, it's one and a half parking stalls per unit, you're basically at 1.81 parking stalls per unit?
That's correct.
So a fair amount over that. The other question I had to do with the affordable rents, and it may not have so much to do, but you know, with all the granite and stainless steel, what are we talking about rents on these kinds of units?
I don't deal in that part of it, Counselor, so I don't know what the rents. I know that this is, this project is tiered to be, to not necessarily be the entry market, but that pretty much all the apartment projects that we've been doing the last couple of years have followed this model.
And can you, the last question I had, can you tell me how many, one, two, and three are there, studios or otherwise, bedrooms?
I can.
Is it in there, did I miss it?
With just one second, I probably can do that for you. And this will be, this is, has been adjusted because we've changed the number of units, but we had, we had, there's two different sizes of two-bedroom, two-bath units that we had in there, so we had six, about 68 two-bed, two-bath of the 90 units and then the balance were one-bedroom and three-bedroom, so after that is about 12 and 12, so.
So one, two, and three, all three?
Yeah, we have all three types, but predominance is the two-twos. Again, that's the rental, the market we have today, as I pointed out, is more couples that are making that choice as opposed, instead of it being a need, they're making a choice to make that move. We all know that what happened in 2008 when the housing market changed and a lot of, a lot of us, or at least there was a lot of people in the United States that learned that owning your own home was not necessarily the American dream anymore and that many have chosen different, a different way to deal with that and we're really seeing a large influx of people that by all standards could afford a home, they're choosing not to be there.
My last question, that fence that's proposed along the north edge, I mean, if I were the homeowner on the other side of that fence, I'd love to have the tree on my side of the fence so I don't have to look at a, you know, chain link fence as opposed to looking at a tree. Have you talked to any of the neighbors to see if that's what they would prefer?
We're, we have no objections to working and moving that fence and making it, and making a shift on that fence relative to the landscaping. Of course, we have a requirement for how many trees we have to establish on site and as long as the trees on the other side of the fence counted as our landscaping requirements, I believe that my client would be more than willing to make adjustments in which side of the fence the trees were on.
I seem to have an abundance of questions even after I say I'm done, but what kind, those show evergreen in your drawings, are you going to put those evergreens or?
The intention is, the intention is to put a mix of both evergreen and deciduous trees. We do that in our sites so that we have, we have green all year round. Those trees there, we would be searching for mature, mature trees that are in the 12-foot range, so they, we can find both types of trees in there, but evergreen, a predominance of evergreen provides continuous screening as opposed to deciduous that don't always, that don't provide, as you know, don't provide the screening all year round, but we would have a mix.
Okay, thank you.
Were there other questions? Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Anderson.
Thank you. I think most of my questions have been asked and answered, but I want to follow up a bit on Counselor Bednarz's questions about the trees. So when you show 12-foot trees, those are the trees you would be putting in, you're not going to be showing trees that several years from now might be 12 feet.
No, no, we would obtain and plant trees that are 12 feet tall to start with.
Then have you met with the folks in Fay Wright?
We have been to a couple of Neighborhood Association meetings about this project and didn't necessarily get the warmest reception at that, in that meeting.
Then this might be a question for staff and I will be asking Mr. Pankel that question later, but there's this issue of the 1.7 acres on the east side that, you know, as I read it, the conditional use would allow residential multifamily use on that 1.7 acres even as a conditional use in the zoning codes.
Yeah, a portion, a portion of the site is CR.
Right, and the other is C.
Without the CN.
N, okay.
And the CN.
Is the 1.7.
And if Aaron or Lisa sees if I'm wrong, but I believe that that's the, I think I have it right there.
You, in order to make this development pencil out, you need that 1.7 acres to be commercial, excuse me, to be the multifamily as well as the other part.
Yeah, the number of units that we've put in here is what our client has deemed as that necessary in order for the price that the bank wanted for the land in order to make work in it. And again, it doesn't make much sense to put apartments up here and then put commercial back here. In fact, residential has always in the past been deemed as the buffer between single-family residential and commercial and more intense uses.
I understand that, thank you for that explanation though.
All right, are there other questions from councilors? All right, thank you very much. We kept you there for a little while and now we'll go to the chair of the Neighborhood Association. This is the Fay Wright Neighborhood Association and I believe it's Sue Heacock? Is that correct?
You've got it, thank you.
Thank you, and you have five minutes representing the Neighborhood Association.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
Welcome.
City councilors, the Fay Wright Neighborhood Association first learned about the proposed Pembroke apartment complex at its September meeting last year. At that time, the neighbor residents expressed their concern about the scale of the project and its impact on the area. The Neighborhood Association has participated in the process submitting comments on the proposed zone change and conditional use prior to and after the public hearing, as well as testifying at the hearing on October 28th. Fay Wright is opposed to the changes and was very pleased with the officer's decision to decline the request for the zone change and conditional use. And you'll hear a lot about that from the number of people who are here to speak. I'm going to focus on just two issues and one of them has had a lot of discussion already and that was the provision of the comprehensive plan change slash neighborhood plan slash zone change 97-23 that was adopted by the Planning Commission in January 1998. It limited the uses on the easterly 1.7 acres of the subject property to those listed in neighborhood commercial zone that are also permitted in commercial retail zones. It was intended to protect the livability of the residential areas on Music Street and Dancer's Court from the potential negative impacts of intense uses that are permitted in the commercial retail zone. That was an appropriate objective then and it's an appropriate objective now, protect the people that have lived there for the past 20 years. Removing that condition and granting a conditional use permit to allow multifamily use would expose residents to many of the same potential negative impacts that were anticipated with some permitted uses in the commercial retail zone. These potential negative impacts include increased activity and the associated noise from cars and people, as well as the lack of privacy due to the proximity of the three-story apartment buildings. Fay Wright maintains that longtime residents in nearby properties should be protected from these impacts. And I'm going to go off a little bit here from script. Imagine yourself in your backyard pruning your roses, fiddling with your tomato starts, picking your blueberries and there's somebody in a balcony on a three-story building watching you. Does that creep you out? That's the kind of thing we're talking about, this lack of privacy from three-story buildings overlooking one-story houses. Okay, moving on to the other thing. Developing the entire subject property in accordance with those limitations in that easterly 1.7 acres, i.e. as neighborhood commercial, would be beneficial to both the immediate neighborhood as well as the Salem residents who travel the Liberty and Skyline roads on a regular basis. Liberty, as was pointed out before, is a major arterial that is currently underserved by small-scale neighborhood shops and services, just the sort of businesses that are allowed in neighborhood commercial zones. With respect to why that property sat there so long, you know that the recovery from the 2008 recession has been slow, but it's coming back, so there's no reason to expect that there might not be more opportunities. Liberty and Skyline provides safe and easy access to, I skipped a, the light at Liberty and Skyline would provide safe and easy access to small businesses located on the subject property. The hearing officer's denial of the requested changes provides an opportunity to reconsider the use of the subject property for much-needed neighborhood commercial development. Fay Wright urges the city council to affirm the decision of the hearings officer. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions from councilors? Counselor Anderson?
Thank you very much for coming down and offering testimony. I have a couple of questions about the proposal we just heard tonight by the developer to say we would not allow access onto our pedestrian pathway from Music Street, but keep it the way it is where you can now have pedestrian access at the end of Dancer Court.
Yeah.
Could you respond to that proposal?
Well, we were opposed to the opening to Music when the parking spaces were more limited, but I must add that when I sat down and counted the number of spaces on the revised plan, I didn't come up with the same number that they came up with. So it still is an issue that you would have overflow parking going on to Music from the apartment complex.
Even though they could not get from Music to the apartment complex without walking down Dancer and then going that way?
Yeah, yeah, I think it depends, you know, on whether they're new visitors to the area and know how to get around or, you know, somebody that went to visit couldn't find a parking place.
And one follow-up question, Mayor, if I may?
Yes, certainly.
You know, I read all this material and some of it's repetitive, so I could skip some of it.
some of it, but until tonight, maybe I missed this, but I thought that there was also going to be access from Pembroke onto the, onto the property. And again, tonight we hear the developer saying we would only have emergency vehicle access there.
Right, and there's a good reason for that because the light to get onto Liberty is down, you know, by Skyline.
Sure.
And if you had people coming out on Pembroke, they'd be dealing with the traffic that had just gone through that light, so that makes perfect sense.
So I guess has it always been the neighborhood's understanding that there would not be access through Pembroke?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
All right. Counselor Dickey, followed by Counselor Lewis, and then Counselor Bednarz. Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for coming down and thanks for your service in the Neighborhood Association. So my question is, because you addressed the issue of privacy, and I know staff mentioned that as well, so if this, if this wasn't a proposal, if there wasn't a multifamily proposed, but it was single-family residential that were two stories instead of, you know, a single story, would that be a concern as well? I mean, is it, is it an issue that anything tall enough to look in the backyard would not be something that would be acceptable?
Well, I think from the perspective just of visibility, yeah, it's a little bit of an issue. But on the other hand, when you have neighbors that have an investment in the property that they have, and in knowing their neighbors, I don't think there would be the same sort of, you know, creepy feeling of some stranger looking at you, if that makes any sense.
So it's an issue of it being a rental versus somebody who's purchased a property?
Yeah, I think so, because if you think about, you know, people that aren't invested in where they live, that they can move anytime, they're going to behave somewhat differently than, some of them, not all of them, but you know, when you're young and wild and you do crazy things, that can happen.
All right, thanks. Counselor Lewis, followed by Counselor Bednarz.
Well, I don't want to call commercial folks unstable, but they're, they're not homeowners. The, the idea of a three-story, three-story commercial building, and using your example of pruning your roses, so rather than being out on the, on the, the top apartment balcony, I'm looking out at you from my third-story commercial window, would you prefer that than the third-story apartment balcony?
Well, for two reasons. One, you wouldn't be there at night, and secondly, your boss would probably make you go back to work.
Well, I, really, in my scenario about the, the mixed use, in today's day and age, small businesses, a lot of folks, that's what they use the third floor is to live there.
Well, when we were thinking of small neighborhood businesses and services, we weren't thinking of high rises, but.
When I think of a small neighborhood business, that is exactly what I think about, somebody who is so small that they are, they live where they work.
Okay, I didn't look at it that way.
Just an idea.
Counselor Bednarz?
Sue, thank you for coming down here. I just had one small question. You had mentioned something about vehicles and smell because of the vehicles and noise because of the vehicles. You want to expand a little bit more. You don't have the drawing of the buildings, the layout of it, but it looked like the building was between the parking lot and the neighbors.
Noise from cars coming and going. I didn't address smell. That's actually for another land use case. But, you know, I mean, people, I mean, you know, people have those big mufflers, they start up, they're coming and going all times of the night, and this has been a quiet residential neighborhood for, you know, 20, the houses were built all in 1994. And just to squeeze this humongous development into four acres, it seems that it's just, you know, asking for a big change on the people that have lived there.
Did you notice the vehicles and noise when that was used as a storage yard?
I wasn't, I wasn't here then, and I don't, you can ask that of some of the people who have lived here for a long time.
Okay, thank you, Sue.
All right, let's see who's next. I see Counselor Bednarz's hand.
He's pointing at me.
Counselor Bennett, all right, he's passing it to you. All right, Counselor Bennett.
Thank you. You mentioned the access. I have been a little confused now by the access. Can you kind of explain to me then, is the access then that kind of little panhandle sticking out?
Yes, yes, that's the only access, and it goes to a controlled intersection so that there won't be people, you know, trying to shoot out and cross a couple of lanes to get where they're going.
Does that, doesn't that help? Help me out here, because I, you know, we all have, this is the kind of thing I think we all sort of like, oh geez, I hope that five acres next door to me doesn't go this way. And, right. And it's called NIMBY, you know, and I want to figure this one out with you. How, how does the traffic coming in off of Liberty and Skyline intersection into this affect those neighbors negatively? That part throws me, because the, the buildings are actually between the, as Counselor Bednarz pointed out, between the parking lot and those houses, they're coming in really quite a ways away.
Yeah.
How does that work?
It isn't the coming in, but it's.
The going out?
It's the activity in the parking lot. You know, you're starting your car, vroom, 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 and, you know, that kind of stuff, and, you know, letting it idle. And, I mean, well, you, you know, you've.
I've got a neighbor who doesn't have a muffler, so I'm identifying with this, okay? And they're renters.
Yeah.
Yeah, they've been renters for about 10 years, but I'm, I'm just curious, what, how, how that kind of works to, to create the detrimental impact. And then, do you disagree then with the argument, I thought it was an interesting one, that an allowed use on that property is not a three-story building, it's a five-story building that could be even that much higher and would have the kind of, I mean, that would, that could occur, because.
Yeah. Well, if.
How would that be handled? How would you all handle that?
Well, I think that it goes back to that condition for the northeastern 1.7 acres.
Yeah.
That if you get a change for that conditional use, which prevented the, what they called, you know, sort of invasive intrusive kind of commercial endeavors, that they were limited to neighborhood commercial, you wouldn't, you wouldn't have that. It's, but if, if they got the zone change to retail commercial, yeah, they could do that. But, you know, I think that the issue really, truly is that here's this little piece of landlocked property that's suddenly going to have lots of activity on it, and what can you do to make it livable for the people who live there?
Yeah. The other question I guess I've got is, it appeared to me in looking at the way the units are sited onto that piece of property, most of them are on whatever end that is, I guess the south side of the property, really, if you cut right across at that panhandle, that street, and the way it comes in, that really, it won't be that many houses up on the residential end, up toward Music and Dancer and Pembroke, that they're really down.
Can somebody go back to that other picture, because there, there are two rows of buildings plus one that kind of comes down into the.
Do you see what I mean? Appears the majority are running really away from the housing.
No, no, they're right up there.
Look at the other half of the property, though.
The other half. Well, I know, but we're, we're trying to protect the people that are in the northeast section. 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, all the things on the top up to Pembroke. That's what the impact is.
Did you all at the neighborhood group just finally take a look at, I thought Mr. Grinns did an interesting job of describing the infrastructure surrounding this area, that there is transit, there is this lit intersection, you've got a doctor's clinic not far away on Skyline, you've got Ross, you've got that whole sort of neighborhood mall down there at Sunny, at Sunny Slope, is it, or whoever it is down there, but it seems like that's sort of the ideal location for this kind of housing.
Well, perhaps, but.
I mean, you know, in a town, in a city, in a city, in a real city.
Sunny Slope is full, and there's very other, very few other opportunities for any kind of neighborhood commercial, as you're, let's say you're going home and you're going down either.
What's that mean, neighborhood commercial? What's that mean?
Small.
Like the Allen, like the Beanery, the Allen Brothers that closed over there at Sunny Slope, or what, is that the kind of one you're talking about?
No, I'm talking about, let's say, another, a doctor's office, dentist's office, massage, you know, some small, maybe a tailor, I don't.
Yeah, okay, okay, I get, I get.
Small, small businesses.
Okay.
Neighborhood businesses.
Okay.
I'll give you a good example from Sunny Slope. Salem Geeks is over there now. They used to be across the street, and they're outgrowing their, their facility, and, you know, they would probably like to move to something bigger. That's what I consider a neighborhood business.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Anything else?
All right, any further questions? Okay, thank you. We will now move to the other people on the list, and we'll start with Tanya Dehart, followed by Paul Casey. And those of you coming to the microphone, you will have three minutes for your testimony. State your name and your address or your ward number, and I want to encourage everyone, please speak up. We can't hear. We cannot hear what is being said at the podium. So please use a projected voice, talk into the microphone, everybody who's coming up, because it's been a real struggle so far tonight. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. My name is Tanya Dehart, and I, my husband and I own 192 Dancers Court, so we are one of those houses that's immediately on the other side of the fence that was being described. You can see it up there on the screen. So I have a prepared statement that I'm going to read. My husband and I are in agreement with the decision of the hearings officer as the owner of one of those properties that directly is affected by this development. To clarify, we are not one that considers the impact of this development as opposed to a vacant site. I'm considering the impact of removing Condition 1E, which of course has been discussed, from the development of the easterly 1.7 acres as opposed to what this neighborhood commercial conditional use offers to the neighborhood. I fully support the decision of the hearings officer to deny this request for change and submit the following comments. Based on the language of SRC 520.001 that outlines the purpose of the neighborhood commercial zone, CN zone, and includes the intention to serve nearby residents, I submit that removal of the CN conditional use in no way offers anything equal to or better than the above intention, excuse me, yeah, as it's clearly defined in the definition of SRC 520. In addition, the proposed development of the easterly 1.7 acres would have a great negative impact on our expectations of the commercial services that can serve the nearby residents. In addition, consistent with the purpose statement which anticipates small-scale developments, several of the potential uses for the easterly 1.7 acres are restricted in size by SRC 520.015C2 and 3. I appreciate the hearings officer stated these realities so clearly on pages 12 and 14. Furthermore, regarding SRC 265.005E1A, the zone change would need to be justified based on the following: A demonstration that there has been a change in the economic, demographic, or physical character of the vicinity such that the zone would be compatible with the vicinity's development pattern. The area remains largely unchanged. The neighborhood commercial CN conditional use was put in place alongside the vicinity's development pattern, of which staff notes on page 13 and 14 clearly state that the area remains largely unchanged. Staff notes that since the property was rezoned in 1997, the land uses in the immediate neighborhood along the north side of Pembroke Street Southeast, Music Street Southeast, Dancers Court Southeast, and the abutting parkland to the east have remained largely unchanged. I submit there is no evidence that the proposed family, multifamily residential development on the easterly 1.7 acres would serve the nearby residents, and is therefore in no way equal to or better than the intended CN services for the neighborhood. As the hearing officer stated on page 18 to support not justifying the zone change, their proposed apartment develop is neither small-scale, nor does it provide a commercial service to the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions? Counselor Anderson?
Thank you for coming down. As, as a lawyer, I appreciate your references to the Salem Revised Code, so good job there.
My husband will be pleased.
I read you had some written testimony that was already in the record. Either you or your husband provided some of that, and I gathered from that that you live, I don't, I don't have a pointer here, so I, I don't know if you could show us of the houses up there?
So the four houses that start with 4769.
Okay.
We're in the one that has 192 on the roof. That's the one that we own.
Okay, oh. Okay, I see it. I got it. Thank you. Now, how long have you lived there?
We've, we bought the house about a year ago.
So when you bought it, the apartments that are there on Pembroke, they were already there, were they not?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
They've been there for some time.
Okay, so you bought it knowing that there were some.
Right.
Multifamily apartments.
We knew what the zoning was, and like, some of the suggested uses, they, they make sense. So we weren't anticipating that this lot was going to be vacant forever in the backyard. We were not anticipating an enormous apartment complex going in there. So it's a bit of a.
Thank you very much.
Counselor Lewis?
So when you do look out, what, what are you anticipating there?
What am I anticipating, or what am I seeing right now?
What do you see coming there?
I see a lot of noise.
No, 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 what, under the current zone.
Oh, oh, sorry.
What would you, what would you anticipate?
What would, yeah. Well, things that fit the current definition, which I understand to be small-scale retail office and service areas, service uses that are compatible with the scale and character of surrounding residential areas. So small things, coffee shops, I mean, there are a lot of things that, dry cleaners, I mean, there's things that, that people in the neighborhood would utilize. So not necessarily lots more neighbors, but services that would be of use to all of the residents in the area.
And you've only been there a year, but the zone has been there now 18 years, nothing has happened.
Yeah. You know, that's unfortunate, but that's not what this is about. It's about whether or not the proposal meets the criteria, and it, I mean, it's factual. You look at the facts, does it meet the criteria? And it simply doesn't. I think if you spend time looking through the hearing officers, they spend a great deal of time, and were very thorough.
Would we, would we ever get to a point where it would matter if it stayed vacant?
Where it would matter? I, I don't think it will remain vacant. I look around Salem and the different areas. I mean, who would have thought that Kaiser Station would be as successful as it is right now? Sometimes, sometimes I don't think we can anticipate. And if you look down Liberty, there's a lot more houses going in down there, which could be a draw, potential draw for additional small businesses. That's not a very far drive potentially for people to go for some of those services that I just mentioned.
And the other thing I, and this is more of a comment, I, I have to say, at some point, I think we would, should, should factor in. The other thing is, there is, the city is now under pressure to create multifamily. I mean, we, we now have to, we have to.
Now, as I understand it, they're allowed to build on everything but the 1.7. So it just becomes an issue of their, they, meaning whoever, whoever purchased the property, their own fiscal analysis that they want to be able to build. There's nothing, as I understand it, that precludes them from building what they're wanting to build in everything but the 1.7. So that would certainly be something that this body, whomever, could encourage them to really look at, that stay with the way it's zoned already. Because that would add a number of units, just not those directly next to those houses. But I get what you're saying. I understand.
Good, thanks.
All right, any other questions?
Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Paul Casey, followed by Phil Anderson.
Hello, my name is Paul Casey. I live at 191 Dancers Court. This is on the corner of Dancers and Music. So I would be looking directly at these structures. The, my house was built actually in 1993, and that's when I bought it. I've lived there the whole time. I have seen the small changes, which means people leaving, some buying other houses, but. But basically, it's the same, unchanged. I'm gonna be very brief. My, my purpose here is to say that you, we all pay for this hearings officer to make decisions that are more legal than I can understand. And I agree with his decision. And I, and I urge you all to also look at that, and I urge you to agree with him also. I don't really have anything else to say.
Thank you. Questions? Counselor Anderson?
Thank you very much for coming down, sir. When you purchased your property in 1993, were the apartment buildings on Pembroke, were they there?
Yes, they were. They are one, one-story apartment.
I can see their difference, yeah.
And, and they have been very good neighbors.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Phil Anderson, followed by Patricia Todd.
Thank you. My name is Phil Anderson and I own the 18-unit apartment complex on the north side of Pembroke Street, as well as one of the single-family dwellings there. Over 24 years ago, when we acquired this land to build apartment units, our objective was to blend into the residential neighborhood. We did not wish to intrude, rather to fit into the surroundings of this area. Accordingly, we chose to build single-story units and have carried on a successful and unobtrusive business there for 23 years. My interest in seeing this three-story project denied has nothing to do with concern for competition, since our tenants already choose a smaller, more residential feel to their living accommodations. At any rate, during our 24 years here, since the demolition of the cannery was completed and the 1997 zone change, various owners and developers have pursued a variety of options for this site. Subsequently, the Walgreens was built and Pembroke Street improvements were completed as a smaller residential street at 35 feet, excuse me, 30 feet wide, as opposed to the normal, normal arterial of 35 feet in keeping with a limited amount of parking and traffic anticipated. Following the completion of Walgreens, the site immediately behind and to the east of Walgreens was prepared for the next phase of a strip mall-type building for small businesses. At least two similar phases were to follow and likely would have been completed by now if the economic conditions hadn't abruptly changed. In the meantime, Willamette Dentistry purchased a lot and built their office. The Mail Depot remodeled and expanded in keeping with the small commercial property pattern. The market has been improving and although some light commercial lags behind, there are encouraging signs that retail sales are again beginning to surface. All of this area of South Salem has recently produced many single-family dwellings and apartments out Skyline and south of Cubler on Liberty and Lone Oak. So this land needs to be preserved for the much-needed small commercial retail to service this area without requiring trips to South Commercial and other parts of Salem for goods and services. I realize that this developer's proposal is very seductive to the planning department, since they are under enormous pressure to respond to projections of the Salem Housing Needs Analysis and Economic Opportunity Analysis draft report that purports a deficient, a deficit of land for multifamily residential designation. However, they choose to ignore the equally important deficit of land for commercial retail designation. In closing, may I quote the hearings officer's remarks? "The CN zone is generally intended to provide areas of small-scale retail office and service uses that are compatible with the scale and character of the surrounding residential areas and that serve nearby residents. This project does nothing to serve the nearby residents and would severely negatively impact our neighborhood. So please, members of the council, carefully review the hearings officer's decision and affirm his denial for this, the overall good of this section of South Salem. Thank you for your consideration on this matter."
Thank you very much. Are there questions of Mr. Anderson? Counselor Dickey, followed by, okay, Counselor Dickey.
Hi, thanks for coming down. So I can't really tell from the picture, so maybe you can help me out. Are, all of the, it sounds like your apartment complex is single-story?
Yes.
Are there any two-story residential in that area? Or is it all single-story?
Mostly everything is single-story. The house that I own right next to the apartments is a, is partially a two-story facility, but everything else is single-story.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, all right, thank you very much. Patricia Todd, followed by Fred Todd. Welcome, be sure you speak up into the microphone.
Good evening, my name is Patricia Todd. I live at 4769 Music Street Southeast, Salem, Oregon, zip code 97302. I am here in agreement of the hearing officer's decision. A three-story apartment complex is not compatible with the scale of our neighborhood. Almost all of the homes and apartments adjacent to the proposed development are one-story. A three-story apartment complex will dwarf the surrounding homes in single-level apartment buildings, which dramatically changes the character of our neighborhood. In your folder, which I'm assuming that you have, there's a, a picture of a six-foot fence in the backyard of a single-family home, which is adjacent to a three-story apartment complex. You can see the scale, the lack of privacy, and how this adversely affects the character of a neighborhood. Please note, there should be a petition in your folder. The petition lists over 50 residents within two blocks of the Pembroke site. These residents are like-minded and desire the current zoning to remain. We have had over 20 years to develop and maintain a healthy neighborhood and preserve the special characteristics that have made our neighborhood our home. Music Street and Dancer Court homes were built 20 years ago. Several homes are adjacent to the Pembroke Field. During the early years, the lot was being used by Skyline Ford dealership to house their new cars. This use of the land by Skyline Ford was in a commercial setting and was utilized that way for many years. Seeing that property was, that was being used was commercial, was a consideration in our purchasing our home on Music Street. Our home directly borders the field on the north of the Pembroke plot. And finally, there is a better use of the Pembroke plot. Salem is in need of jobs and developing small businesses is a paramount to growing economy. Southeast Salem would be best served through the development of businesses. Now that the economy is on the upswing, our neighborhood recently had a Willamette Dental just two months ago, a Walgreens store, and the Mail Depot has expanded to add areas for new businesses. As indicated, there is a need for services and businesses in the Fayright neighborhood that are within walking distance. These new businesses have created much-needed jobs for the community and as this land is suited for small business, business expansion, it would be prudent to stay on course and develop this land as it was intended. There is very little land available for small business development and our neighborhood has been thrilled with the new businesses and are excited about the prospects of more jobs in our local area. Again, I'm in agreement of the hearing officer's decision and I thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there questions? Counselor Anderson?
This is it, you wanna come first?
No, I, 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 I'm looking at your picture.
So this would be my side, my backyard, and the apartment building would be directly looking. And you can see there's these windows, these ones, even the bottom story windows. And this is a perfect rendition of the closeness of the apartment. On that scale there, it's, it's kinda deceptive. 30 feet is not very much.
I, I guess my, my question on that is, yeah, that's fine. I'm glad you're here and I'm glad you're testifying and, and I'm glad you're interested in what's going on in your neighborhood. Do you know, did you measure the distance between the fence that you, is in the picture you took and the apartment building?
Yes.
Okay, and how far was that?
That was 20, 28, 28 feet, I believe it was, 28, 29. My ruler was only, I kinda, kinda ran out, you know, distance on the ruler.
Okay, so by your measurement, it's 28 feet between the fence and the, and the wall of the apartment complex?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Fred Todd, followed by Evan White.
Hello, my name is Fred Todd. I live at 4769 Music Street and, and Salem. And I agree with the hearings officer's decision also. Our home abuts on the north side to where the apartments are. First, the findings noted in the report prepared by staff for the October 28th, 2015 hearing, page 10. Findings from the 1997 Planning Commission decision indicated that the use limitation condition was placed on the zone change in order to limit the type of commercial activities in residence that could be allowed on the eastern 1.7 acres of the site in order to assure compatibility between future uses and the adjacent single-family residential neighborhood along Music Street and the city parkland. Second, the proposed three-story, 90-unit apartment complex is not compatible with the adjacent neighborhood and the surrounding area north of the site. The majority of homes that abut to the site are single-story, single-family. The surrounding area north is comprised of single-story and a few two-story, single-family homes. The commercial buildings are single-story. There are no three-story buildings in the vicinity. Thirdly, the applicant's proposal fails to promote commercial and residential services by using all of the available lots for three-story apartments. The apartments do not provide commercial or residential services to the neighborhood, nor does it strengthen long-term employment in the community. I will conclude by noting the hearings officer's decision. The proposed apartment complex is neither small-scale nor does it provide commercial service to the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions for Mr. Todd?
Hey, I'm, I'm good.
All right, thank you so much.
No questions.
Appreciate your testimony. Evan White, followed by Dennis Miller.
I've got a handout. I have a handout. And I'm representing the Sunny Slope Neighborhood Association, but I promise I've squished my comments down to three minutes.
Well, that's fine. If you're representing the Neighborhood Association, you can have five minutes.
Okay, then I can use?
Okay.
Hand gestures and voice and so forth.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and counselors, and thank you for your many hours of unpaid service. And welcome to Salem, Mr. Powers. I am Evan White, Land Use Chair of the Sunny Slope Neighborhood Association. We are separated from Fayright by Liberty Street, along which there are limited commercial facilities. As you know, we have no weekend bus service. Our population is expanding as development occurs at the south end of town. Mr. Grants, for example, was present at our last meeting to talk about other plans he has further along down Liberty Street. Alan Alexanderson, our neighborhood chair, and I attended the hearing before the hearings officer. City staff and the developers received a fair hearing and the hearings officer arrived at a reasonable interpretation that affirms the intent of Salem's development codes. I particularly thought he hit the nail on the head when he said after considering all the evidence, "The hearings officer is not persuaded that it is logical to ignore the benefits gained by small-scale commercial retail office and service uses compatible with the scale and character of adjacent, single-family residential development by allowing a large-scale, multifamily apartment that intensifies compatibility issues related to current off-street parking issues, intensifies the loss of solar and privacy for the small-scale residential development pattern in existence while providing no commercial services." Staff wants us basically to drive at least a mile and a half away in order to get a haircut or have a nice meal at a sit-down restaurant. This seems inconsistent with your plan, your goals, since council has said that it strives for a strong neighborhoods in a well-planned community. On page six, the staff report says that there is a 207-acre deficit of land for multi-housing, multifamily housing. What staff does not say is that there is a much greater 271-acre deficit of land for commercial development and that the deficit is particularly acute in South Salem. The developer is currently building a 52-unit apartment complex along Skyline, several blocks away. As noted in my attachment to my handout, there are plans for a 228-unit apartment complex along Davis Road. Homeowners who built their houses under one set of rules now find that the rules are being interpreted in a gotcha way that weakens our neighborhood. Homeowners should not have to be constantly looking over their shoulders wondering where the next foot will fall. So I ask, why are homes in Salem 35% below the value of homes in Corvallis, 14% below the value of homes in Eugene, and 34% below homes in Portland? One explanation might be loosey-goosey code interpretation. And if you think I'm being unfair, please look at the attached email correspondence. We have been waiting for three and a half years for city staff to develop a grading code, just like the other cities which have higher property values. Please affirm the hearings officer's decision. He comes from a town with higher property values. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions for Mr. White? Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate you coming to testify. Dennis Miller, followed by Jan Doofers?
Jay Duffus. Jay, it's Jay. Jay, it's Jay.
Oh, sorry, all right, Jay, thank you.
Mayor, could I use some help?
Mr. Miller, welcome.
Thank you.
Uh huh.
Good evening. As you know, my name is Dennis Miller. I am co-owner of the Mail Depot and the building located at the northeast corner of Skyline and Liberty Roads. Tonight, the city council will deliberate whether David Columbia, the hearings officer for this case, made the right decision. For this region of southwest Salem, evidence shows that there's an abundance of property allocated to multifamily with a lack of property available for commercial development. And that's why Aaron has helped me put up this map. Is to kinda show, and I'm not sure if you can see it very well, but all of the little green labels on the map are apartment complexes within the region. You'll also note that there's really a lack of commercial space available, shown in the red, the largest being Kaiser Permanente. Also not shown on that is the apartment complex that Evan talked about being constructed on Skyline Road at this time. Now, near the center of all this development, in the middle of the residential area, is what is called Liberty Crossing. Southwest Salem has a large population base with a minimum of shops and services to support it. The council adopted the findings of the Salem Economics Opportunities Analysis last October. If the goal is to have a mix of residential and commercial development, quote, "to ensure that retail and services are within or near neighborhoods", then removing Liberty Crossing from commercial development goes against that objective. The applicant's recent submission in support of the apartments indicates that fewer trips would be generated by apartments opposed to commercial development. The Liberty Crossing site should remain for commercial development because it can safely handle a large volume of traffic. Where else in southwest Salem could business patrons go and utilize the safety of a signalized intersection? This unique location is the only option available at this time or in the foreseeable future. The proposed zone change would be less well-suited for the property than the existing zone. Almost 20 years ago, I attended the hearings for the Liberty Crossing's change from IP to CR. I recall the discussions about the CN restrictions. The planners wanted to allocate the Easterly 1.7 acres to uses that would have a minimal impact on the residential areas to the north. Several proposals were to have small medical offices back there, something where they wouldn't be intrusive into the neighborhood. Keeping that in mind, the businesses built and remodeled on the site in the last few years... the current development patterns at Liberty Crossings. For these reasons, the decision of the hearings officers should be upheld. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions? All right, thank you for coming down. Appreciate your testimony. All right, Jay, is it Doofers?
It's Duffus.
Duffus?
Yeah. I'm sorry that I wrote in cursive.
It's all right.
It's my full pleasure.
You did a good job. I just have to decipher this.
It's Duffus, and it's like Duff in the U.S.
Got it.
But I had the privilege of moving into this neighborhood and questioned on the Dancers cul-de-sac four years ago. I was delighted to find an area where, when they take my car away from me, I'd be able to walk to the grocery store, get on a bus, and so it's a delightful area to live in as a resident. And it would be wonderful to see a few more stores around there, a little more selection in terms of some restaurants maybe nearby to walk to. And so I would affirm the hearings officer's decision not to change this zone. And one of the, it's more of a subjective reasoning, since I have a couple more minutes here, is that one of the things I was able to experience in the past was to manage 120-unit complex in the San Francisco Bay Area. And looking at the pictures that we saw tonight of what the interiors of these apartments are going to be like, they're very appealing, I think, to semi-professional people, were the type of people that were living in our apartments. We had two-plus parking spaces per apartment in 120 units. There were 100 units that were one-bedroom apartments, which were shared because of the cost by two semi-professional or professional people. So they all had at least two cars per apartment, even though it was a one-bedroom apartment. And so because of the limited street parking in the original hearing, I went out and measured all of the available space on Rubitz and curb parking space on Rubitz and in our little cul-de-sac and on Music and over on the Pembroke site, and very little available curb parking space. There's none on Liberty, and the facility that we managed had a boulevard that had four lanes on it, and on both sides of the boulevard, there was curb parking. And people were able to access that parking, and we still had parking problems because of the nature of the residents who were semi-professional people that were able to afford their own vehicle and wanted to get to work on time. So, thank you very much, and again, I would affirm the decision of the hearings officer.
Thank you. Are there questions? All right, thank you so much for coming down. Vicki Miller, followed by Kendra Parker.
Good evening. My name is Vicki Miller. I am co-owner with Dennis of the Mail Depot. We've been in the neighborhood
You might want to pull that microphone down. There you go.
Should I start all over?
All right.
Co-owner with Dennis Miller of the Mail Depot. We've been in that neighborhood since 1988, so we've seen a lot of comings and goings. But mostly, I want to concentrate specifically on what the hearing officer said tonight. And I want to quote, it's kind of a long sentence in my opinion, so I had to read it like 20 times to understand it. "After considering all the evidence, the hearing officer is not persuaded that it is logical to ignore the benefits gained by small-scale, commercial, retail, office, and service uses compatible with the scale and character of adjacent, single-family residential development, which is a significant number of residents asserted would serve their commercial needs by allowing a large-scale, multifamily apartment that intensifies compatibility issues related to the current off-street parking issues, intensifying the loss of solar and privacy of small-scale development pattern in existence with providing no commercial services," unquote. "The subject property is inside the urban growth boundary, and it needs to be developed. The question is how. In making the decision, the hearing officer has said the most logical use is commercial development. I agree that this region of Salem would be best served with more shops and eateries and services. With the improvements completed on Skyline Road, pedestrian and bicycle access to the property has greatly improved, complementing the improvements done on Liberty Road years ago. The stoplight makes it easy to enter and leave the property. This all goes along with the quoted phrase, 'the city's stated goal of providing new shopping and service centers for underserved residential areas, ensuring that these centers are accessible by pedestrians and bicycles as well as automobiles.' This part of South Salem would fall into the underserved residential area category. To quote the hearing officer again, the applicant has made, has not made the necessary demonstration that the proposed zone change is equal or better suited for the property than the existing zone. He made a thorough analysis of the facts. Reading through his notice of decision, one can tell he considered not just the boundaries of the subject property, but the surrounding community."
Please affirm his decision and deny this appeal. Thank you. Thank you. Are there questions for Ms. Miller? All right, thank you so much. Appreciate you coming down. Kendra Parker?
Now you are here. I'm Kendra Porter, the owner of Chrisless Interiors, located at the Mail Depot, and I started my business three years ago. I wanted to be in South Salem, and I was looking for a place for my showroom and my office. And the Mail Depot had just completed their remodel and had an office on the south side, and it's a great location. I'm right on the corner. When people are stopped at the light, they can see from any direction, they can see my showroom and my signage, and when clients need directions, I can say that I'm right on the corner. Another benefit of being located at the Mail Depot is how close it is to my home, and it's really nice to be just minutes away from my house. There's lots of other tenants in our building that have this benefit as well. And in the business world, we know that choosing the right location can make or break a startup. And as advice is given many times, if you spend more money on a good location than save money on a poor location, the success of my business has been in part by choosing this correct location. It hasn't hurt that I take advantage of the traffic and the referrals that are generated by the people that come in and out of the Mail Depot. The property being talked about tonight is a great location for commercial development. It's highly visible at the intersection of South Salem's two major streets. And since the Willamette Dental has just completed their building, I've been able to circle around and use the light so that I don't need to try to get out into traffic off of Pembroke. It would be a shame to see this land converted to apartments when it is best suited for small businesses. The existing customer flow generated by Walgreens, Mail Depot, and Willamette Dental would be far more helpful to other small businesses than another apartment complex. I am in full agreement with the hearing officer's statement that the applicant has not met its heightened burden of persuasion in demonstrating that a change or changes in the economic, demographic, or physical character of the vicinity has occurred, such that the proposed zone change would be compatible with the vicinity's development pattern. Please uphold his decision to deny this zone change request. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions from councilors? Counselor Benjamin?
Thanks for coming down. So if there's a strip mall, one story, built farther back in there, would you relocate?
No. No, I actually, well, I actually have noticed that, really, it started with dental people being right behind us, that there are people walking all over, using Walgreens and coming into the Mail Depot. There's a great little bakery, and I really rely on people needing things, that that's how they walk by and see my business. There's so much stop-by traffic that people aren't even really looking for something that I do. I serve a very specific niche, but I still have people that will just stop by out of pure curiosity. And so I think it's really great, and I would be much better suited for people who are out shopping for something that would be in the area.
Well, you mentioned something really interesting about location. It's better to pay more for a great location than less on a bad location. That's going to help your success if you're willing to step up and have a better, which you did.
Right.
You have a great location. The concern is, is that farther back, that location starts to, that, that
For the people that are back there.
Yeah, that, that matrix that you brought up is, that's probably why it has, nothing's been built back there, but
Yeah, that's probably part of it. And I imagine that, you know, signage would be something that would be part of whatever would be developed back there, that there would definitely be signage out on the street that, you know, their frontage would have to be, you know, something that the city would want to advocate for.
But you wouldn't relocate back there if they put a whole new strip mall back there?
Would I?
Yeah, no.
Well, no, I'm on the corner.
Okay. I got you. All right, thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate your testimony. All right, that concludes the list of people who had signed up. Is there anyone in the, in the council chambers this evening that did want to testify during this public hearing and didn't get a chance to get your name on the list? All right, going, going on. We will now have questions of staff. Following that, we'll have the five minutes for the applicant's rebuttal. All right, councilors, Counselor Lewis.
Yeah, Aaron, can you pull up the slide that shows the imprint of the proposed apartments there? And can you show me where the east 1.7 acres?
Yeah, if you look on the map, right at the end of Pembroke, right where that pedestrian pathway starts, you'll notice three homes on Dancers Court and Music Street.
Can you use a pointer?
Yeah.
Please?
Oh, I have the mouse here. So roughly, at this point down, if we can, if we continue a line down here and extend that to the east, that's roughly 1.7 acres. So the intent of that use limitation is the property that directly looks at those residential homes.
Okay, and on that drawing there, how many, how many units are on the north side there? Is it eight?
Um, are those 12-unit apartments? So we have two, we have 24 that would be directly on the north here, and another two on the
I'm just talking about the north, so and I'm, so there are three stories, right?
Yes.
So, how many total?
Oh, 24.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Counselor Anderson, followed by Counselor Benner.
for apartments to the extent that the code allows.
They would still need a conditional use permit, which is part of this request too, but they could do that without modifying the zone change condition.
Okay, so, and the zone change condition only applies to the 1.7?
Right.
So, let's assume hypothetically that apartments would be built on the, on the western end. How would you get access to the, what would be remaining, the commercial, the small business, small commercial? Where would access come in?
Well, there'd be two points possible. There's the shared access, and this is that private driveway that serves some of the existing businesses
Yeah.
that goes out to the Liberty intersection.
So through the apartment complex to get to the businesses?
Yes, right.
Okay. What about through Pembroke?
That would be possible as well.
Could you, let me ask another question that's not related to this now. There's been testimony about 207 acres of commercial deficit and 270 deficit in residential. I don't know, it looks like Lisa's getting up here. You know, I wonder if, Lisa, you could comment on that, because obviously, if we change this to residential, we're taking away from commercial, but we are also adding to the, decreasing the deficit in the, in the residential.
Correct. Hi, Lisa Anderson, Ogilvy and the Planning Administrator. We are required under state law to meet our deficit of multifamily land. We're not required to meet the commercial deficit, and the study assumes that the market will address that. We did assume that some of our commercial land would develop for multifamily, because that's what we've been seeing. Because we don't have enough multifamily land, people are seeking out other places for it. So in the study, it assumed that a certain percentage of our commercial land would develop for multifamily. It also assumed that our commercial land would redevelop at a pretty conservative rate, and we think that as there's more pressure on the market, the commercial land we have will redevelop to more intensive commercial, so more, you know, where you might have one large building and a huge parking lot, would redevelop with a lot of smaller uses and less parking and that kind of thing in the future.
Thank you.
Is that helpful? And while I have your ear, we just wanted to point out a few things the applicant has proposed, four things that they said they are willing to do, and we just want to make it clear that those aren't proposed conditions. So if the council was, you know, in favor of those four things, you would probably want to consider making those conditions. The tree size that they mentioned, the 12-foot trees, that is larger than the code requires, so that isn't currently a requirement. They mentioned providing an eight-foot tall wooden fence along the property line between the single-family and the multifamily. The code only requires six feet, so if you want to require something taller, that would need to be a condition. They proposed emergency access only from Pembroke. That's not a requirement right now, so if you are in favor of that, you would want to make it a condition. And they're proposing not to allow the public sidewalks on Music Street to connect into the pedestrian path along the property line there. They're proposing just to have a fence and shut that off. The 97 condition does require that connection, so if you don't want to allow that, you would need to consider a condition stating that. Is that clear?
All right. Is that clear to everyone, what Ms. Ogilvy just stated? Okay.
We were all writing it down, I think.
Okay, all right. Now I see hands up. Counselor Anderson, the Counselor Bennett.
I took extensive notes, and I went through this, and I may have some more questions, but after this question, I'll let the other councilors ask some questions.
I don't know who was next. Counselor Bennett or Counselor Bennett?
No, 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 I do have, after this, this next question.
Oh, you have another question.
I probably have 20 more, but I will only ask one.
I see, okay, all right.
And this is for the city attorney.
All right.
And I'm going to talk in, you know, I guess, a little legalese. You know, the, the standard is a heightened burden of proof. And, you know, we've got three standards, basically, in the law. One is preponderance of the evidence. The other is what is known as clear and convincing evidence, which I'm pretty sure really means the, the judge just says, "The evidence is clear, and I'm convinced." And then we also have beyond a reasonable doubt. So I would presume that the heightened burden of proof is somewhat analogous to the clear and convincing standard?
I don't think the city, the council, or the staff has typically looked at that, that statement in the code that way. I think basically what we viewed of that statement in the past to mean is that the greater, the greater appearance of conflict between the proposed use and the surrounding area, the greater burden the applicant has to make to show that they've met the criteria. I don't necessarily think that there's, you know, this clear and convincing standard versus preponderance. It's just that there's, there's more of a hurdle for them to overcome.
And so in this situation, at least the hearing officer recognized that there is this, this greater, greater dichotomy between what is currently there and what is proposed.
I believe so in his case. I don't know that we, as staff or the city attorney's office, completely agrees with the
Sure, sure. Well, I know the staff doesn't agree with, you know, the conclusion, but, okay. Thank you, that's helpful.
Okay. Counselor Bennett, followed by Counselor Benner.
Thank you, Lisa, or Aaron, either one of you, whichever. I wanted to see again the existing zoning map and just ask a little bit about it for this, for this region, kind of, yeah. One of the arguments I thought that was interesting was the, really, the lack of commercial, commercially-zoned property and services in this area, I thought was a kind of compelling argument, given, as you sort of step back from this, there's an awful lot of housing here, there's a lot of people living here, and you've got sort of Sunny Slope and the Mail Depot, Walgreens, and then you, you don't, kind of. And that's why I want to understand if that is the correct, is that the kind of mix our comprehensive plan contemplates? And then we'd add 90 more units to that area? I just want to kind of understand how that fits together.
Well, so first
It's a comprehensive planning concept.
This, this is the last kind of major commercial area that you'll find before going south. Everything else is residential.
Right.
And what we're asked
Or it's the first one you hit going north.
Or first one you hit going into town.
Yeah.
And we're, we're looking at, just, does, does this site here, does it, does it meet the zone change criteria, and does it meet the conditional use requirement for the multifamily use? We're really looking at that this site We're really looking at that this site, not, not the rest of that Liberty Road corridor.
It seemed like, then, are you saying, because I thought the hearings officer talked about that, that, that commercial need, and I, at least that's how I, so you're saying he, he made a fundamental error by talking about the, the need for this as a commercial site?
With, with the hearings officer and his decision, he was using the intent statement for the CN zone, and this property, it's not neighborhood commercial, and actually the locational requirements in the CN zone would not, it wouldn't work for this site, it doesn't meet that criteria. It has to be set further back from a major arterial street, and it can't be right next to a commercial zoning. So the site by itself would not qualify for CN zoning.
Huh. What, what's that mean? Yeah, how's that? I mean, kind of take me to, to what your conclusion means there, I don't quite understand. If it's, if that's what is contemplated, and you're saying that isn't, that won't work.
What, what...
You're losing me, I just got lost, I guess. If you could help me through that.
Counselor, if I could try to help here, Glenn Gross, I'm the Community Development Director. What Erin has been talking about, what the staff report refers to, is that the zone change in 1997 was crafted in a way to limit uses on this 1.7 acres that, that we keep talking about. And the reason that it was determined back in 1997 that it was necessary to limit the kind of uses that can go there was a concern about uses that could otherwise be allowed in the commercial retail zone would be too, too intense, too impactful for the surrounding areas. We didn't find, in our review of the record, any specific reference to multifamily being that impacting kind of use that they were concerned about. Rather, we saw in the record a continuing reference to auto-oriented, drive-through uses, things that were deemed to be incompatible with the surrounding area. So rather than craft a, a specific list of uses that would work for this site, that are allowed in the commercial retail zone, because that's what the zone change was to, CR, not CN, it was to CR, that's what it is now. The staff said, no, that's too hard. For whatever reason, and I wasn't there, so I don't know. They just decided it would be too hard to craft a specific set of uses, and instead they said, you know what, we'll just say any uses that are allowed in this neighborhood commercial zone, and that are also allowed in the CR zone, those are the only uses that can occur on this 1.7 acres. That's how they chose to do it.
And the concept, just, Glenn, just to kind of put it in a context that I'll understand then, the concept was to create a kind of lower intensity use on this piece of property?
Apparently, yes.
The question, I guess, becomes then, does this three-story multifamily use represent a similar kind of approach?
Right.
And, and the staff is arguing it does, is, do I understand that, that it's similar?
The, what the staff is arguing is that the, the, the hearing officer could have, he didn't, but he could have evaluated this site as to its suitability for multifamily. We don't think that's ever been done before, it wasn't done in 1997, and it wasn't done in the most recent hearing, in front of the hearing officer. Correct me if I'm wrong, Erin, I think I'm, I'm on the right track here. So we believe that the hearing officer should have, and we made a recommendation to him to consider the suitability of this site for multifamily. He chose not to do that. That doesn't preclude the council from doing that, and that's what we're asking the council to do tonight, is evaluate this site and come to your own conclusion about whether you think this is a suitable site for multifamily use. We think it is.
Is that it, Counselor Bennett? Just a minute.
Well, I'm not sure, so we're being asked to evaluate this site for multifamily, for this specific multifamily use, because we do see a neighboring multifamily use that's, that is one story.
Right.
More in, apparently in keeping with the neighborhood, or, you know.
I understand that.
So you're asking us to look at a very, it seems like a reasonably intense multifamily use.
It would be comparable to our RM2...
Not just multifamily, yeah.
Our RM2 multifamily zone that we have today. The number of units that they're proposing for this size of site would be comparable to what the property would be developed as if it were RM2.
And you feel like we have enough information tonight to make that decision? I mean, do we have that?
That's our recommendation, Counselor.
That's your recommendation.
But certainly...
Are these the only, and then just, this will be my last question, are these the only four conditions that should be applied to make this a more successfully compatible?
I believe the staff recommendation had three conditions of approval already, and I was just trying to point out that the applicant has...
Agreed for.
Proposed four different things, additional things, and I wanted to make it clear that unless you make it a condition, there would be no requirement for them to actually do that.
I see what you're saying, okay.
Because tonight, we're not looking at the design or the site plan review, that would, you know, the building permits, that would be a later step. And we want to make sure if you are expecting a taller fence or bigger trees, that we can require that at that time.
Is there a time limit on what's going on here?
120 days is February, late February is everything.
Okay, great, thank you.
I want to ask a quick follow-up, though, to something that you were just talking about, and I want to ask, if you can enlarge that map, I guess it would be, no, no, shrink the map so that we can see the commercial areas or the commercial zoning further on Liberty Road that's just north. I, I have a feeling we're just looking at such a tiny space, and I want to be sure we see...
I'm actually going to use the map provided by one of the neighboring property owners here. I don't have something that shows the, the greater extent, unfortunately, but the property is right here at the intersection...
Right there, right, right.
Of Liberty, Skyline. Commercial is going to be indicated by the red.
Right, right.
So there's Sunny Slope Neighborhood Association, you'll see a few more areas right next to the...
Well, that's to my point, because I've driven that road over and over and over and over, and as you come along, there are dental offices, the Boy Scouts of America has an office, there's all kinds of commercial business along Liberty. It's not residential on Liberty by any means. There are all kinds of businesses that people can walk to and, and visit, from, you know, hairstyles to dentists to whatnot, you know, brew pubs. I, I guess maybe the, the proliferation of businesses along there maybe has happened over time and with variances, but I just want to be clear that we're not looking at an area that's single-family, you know, zip all the way into town. That's a commercial, a major commercial thoroughfare. Wouldn't you say?
Correct.
Okay, I just want to make that clear. Okay. And also, along Skyline, there are a number of commercial businesses from Skyline all the way over, from Liberty all the way over to, I think that's Kubler?
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, not every one, but they're there, and, and more of them are going in. So it really is a commercial area, not single-family residential along those thoroughfares. Okay, now, there are other people with their hands up, and I think it was Counselor Dickey and then Counselor McCoy, oh, Counselor Bednarz, and then Counselor Dickey, then Counselor McCoy.
I actually think I stepped over on one, but it doesn't really matter.
I'm so sorry, okay.
I've written down my comments or questions. I just wanted a clarification on the Pembroke, what sort of screening is going to be along there? I understand that there's going to be a gate that is proposed to be only used in an emergency. Is there going to be that same site obscuring fence? And I think I just heard a second ago, by the way, that's a wood fence now?
Correct, so this conceptual plan, we haven't reviewed it yet for site plan review standards and designer use standards. When that step comes along, if it's approved, one of the things that the multifamily design standards require that's beyond what a commercial development receives is a six-foot side obscuring fence, and when you're abutting, single-family residential like this, it can't be a chain link fence, it has to be a wood fence. The standard that we have in the code is six feet, but the, one of the conditions that the applicant has proposed is to go a little bit taller.
So that would be, that six-foot, or that eight-foot fence would also continue along Pembroke, is what I'm asking?
It, it would, it would go along the abutting residential area, it would not continue along the street.
And there would be nothing there?
No, there, there's no requirement.
Okay, and, and was there any comment received by any of the other commercial? I'm clearly hearing from the Mail Depot, was there anything from the Walgreens?
We didn't hear from Walgreens on this.
Or the storage facility, the other two sides?
No, we didn't hear from them.
Do you know of any, any amount of criminal activity that happens in the Wendy Kroger Park?
I'm not sure.
Has there been? I don't know if somebody else?
I'm not sure.
My point was, is just, if you had somebody there to overlook the, the park, if there were issues, I suspect that would diminish, because they would be observed by other people in the neighborhood. If we affirmed the hearings officer's decision, and I, I mean, at that point, this is one tax lot right now, correct?
No, there's, I believe, three different lots.
So is that 1.7 acres one of those tax lots?
The, the, 1.7 doesn't match one of the lots cleanly. It, it goes from, again, that point at the end of the cul-de-sac, straight down. You could see, sort of, I think there's a lot line that goes here that roughly follows music, but that doesn't reflect the 1.7 acres.
What I'm reaching to is, is that one of the options that the landlord has is to split the property up, again, do the commercial development on the west half and then turn the east half either into, it looks like it would be, single-family residential? And then that question then came to Music Street, access from Music Street for residential? Is, that was required in the 97 decision, is, at this point, one that's being abandoned? Is that what I understand?
The pedestrian access was required.
Pedestrian and vehicle traffic access. Basically, how do you get to that end of the lot if you turn it into residential, be it single-family or otherwise?
Turn this into single-family? We would have to look at access at that point, and I guess Music Street or Pembroke would be the only two options available to serve that.
The other question I had, I know the neighborhood, I too have driven it many times, it's in my ward, can you describe other residential multifamily units? I know that we're talking about the ones directly north on Pembroke, are all single-story, but aren't quite a few of the other residential developments in that neighborhood two-story?
I believe, yeah, quite a few along the corridor.
Do you know of any three-story at all?
Not right off.
Down on Sunny, okay, Sunny Slope, there would, there is some down on the, on the other street that's being, now having the sidewalks put in, three-story down there. So I, just trying to figure out, is it a character of the neighborhood, is it allowed? Or, you know, has it been done before? It sounds like, yes, it has, not a lot. And I'm very much aware of the housing needs, I was on the committee that worked on that, and, and again, boy, I'm fit between a rock and a hard spot, so thank you for answering the questions.
All right, Counselor Dickey, and then Counselor McCoy. Oh, was it Counselor McCoy first? All right, Counselor Dickey.
All right, thank you, Mayor. So I'm, I'm still trying to understand a little bit the current zoning that's there, so bear with me, I don't have a terribly exhaustive list here, but I'm trying to figure out, so if, if that stayed in its current zoning, and some of that small, you know, retail and, you know, small businesses came in, like we heard a lot about, I'm, I'm trying to imagine, would, say, for example, a bar be allowed in that, the way it's zoned now?
With, with that use limitation, use is having to be permitted in both the CN and the CR on that easternmost 1.7. Restaurants that primarily serve alcohol would not be permitted on that portion.
Okay, so that would, and on the, the portion, the east portion of it, but on the west portion?
It would be a permitted use.
It would be a permitted use. So like a bar, a lottery deli, a strip club, that kind of thing would be allowed in that eastern, because I know we don't have real restrictions around those things. Okay, things that may not necessarily be comfortable in a residential area that are more suited to a commercial area. I'm just trying to think of what could potentially go in there that might be concerning, that might create noise and activity, you know, some sort of 24-hour or very late into the evening business. So there could potentially be that on that east portion of it. So what about on that west side? Could you just throw a couple examples out of, if it remained what it was, what kinds of businesses then could go in there?
So on, on the west side, there's, there's no use restriction, it's just a retail commercial zone, so it does allow some drive-through uses, some higher impact commercial uses, motor vehicle services.
How about the east? I'm sorry, I think I said it backwards, how about the east side?
So, so where the, the east portion, it would have to be uses that are in both the CN and the CR. So what, what will be permitted is retail, personal services, restaurants, but not bars, and offices.
Could it potentially be something that's, say, a 24-hour?
There wouldn't be any hour limitations.
So it could, there could be business that would operate 24, I mean, a restaurant, for example, that could operate 24 hours a day, could locate on that eastern portion?
Yeah, there, there wouldn't be any restriction on hours of operation.
Okay, so, or, you said they can't sell alcohol, how about like a 7-Eleven that would, people would go to at, you know, any time of day? Okay, all right, thank you very much.
Couldn't marijuana be sold there?
Uh, yes.
So it could be a dispensary?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. And Counselor McCoy had a question, or maybe several.
Thank you, Mayor. The developer, we've got a couple additions here that say it was foreclosed, the developer was trying to develop the commercial property, was foreclosed. Was this the same developer that brought, brought in, the drugs, the Walgreens and the dental place? Was that his land too he was developing, or was that separate?
I'm not, I'm not entirely sure.
Okay. Yes?
I'm hearing yes.
Yes, Gordon King and others had that whole piece, and they had it set up to where, where the Walgreens went in, and with that, the widening of Pembroke Street.
Okay, so...
Excuse us, I'm sorry, but you're not allowed to, I, city attorney has just told me that you're not allowed to provide further information, sorry. Okay. Counselor McCoy, did you have some further questions?
Yeah, going back, after you answered Counselor Bennett's questions, I'm still confused now on the CR, the CN, and then a conditional use permit to allow it to be built anyway. So if it's CR, right now, just a CR with no conditional use permit, and you can explain what that is to me now, you can't build multifamily housing on it anyway.
That's correct, you can't do...
So it's not zoned for multifamily housing on either side, really?
It, it's zoned for multifamily housing if you get a conditional use permit in the CR zone normally. In this case, the 1.7 acres was carved out and said, this is going to be limited as far as what you can do there, you can't do everything you could normally do in a CR zone. And a conditional use permit means that, a conditional use is a use that is deemed to be an appropriate use for the zone, but it may have features or characteristics that need to be mitigated for the surrounding area, and therefore is subject to a special permit called a conditional use permit, where conditions can be placed on it prior to allowing it.
Okay, so is it staff's opinion that this is not viable commercial, other, commercial property?
No.
That can be developed?
No, it's not our opinion that it's, our opinion is that it's equally or better suited for multifamily use as well. If, if somebody wanted to...
As soon as he's done.
Oh, all right, go ahead, and then our city attorney has an opinion or a comment.
I was just going to say, real quick, if somebody wanted to build commercial, the zoning would allow that, subject to the limitations on the 1.7 acres. We're just saying that in addition to that, it should be allowed to be, developed as multifamily, because we think it has the characteristics that are appropriate for that kind of a use.
Madam Mayor, if I may, just add on to Glenn's comments, that we talked about the equal or, or better suited, that comes straight from the criterion for the zone change for this particular application. So it says, "A demonstration of the proposed zone change is equally or better suited for the property than the existing zone." And it describes what that means, it says the proposed zone, the CR zone, without the CN restriction... And it describes what that means, it says the proposed zone, the CR zone without the CN restriction, is equally or better suited for the property than the existing zone if the physical characteristics of the property are appropriate for the proposed zone. And even the hearings officer found that that was the case. The second part of it is that, and the uses allowed by the proposed zone, in this case, the multifamily, which is in dispute here, are logical with the surrounding land uses. Now, staff has looked at it and said that this use, given the, the surrounding uses, the, the other commercial establishment, the surrounding, single-family uses, make it logical. And the hearings officer has said, no, based on this previous 97 zone change, this community, or this neighborhood commercial was an important aspect of that, and he didn't find it logical. This is a discretionary decision, I can see where the hearings officer was coming from. Staff and the city attorney's office disagrees, but obviously, this is your decision.
Party on, that's when you get paid the big bucks.
Yeah, that's right, that's when we get the big bucks.
Counselor McCoy, did you have other questions?
Comment, I hate this.
All right, Counselor Anderson, Counselor Nanki, and then Counselor Benjamin, okay.
I want to follow up first, if I may, with the city attorney. This equally or better suited language you were just talking about, that is where the heightened burden of proof comes in. That's, 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 we have, the applicant has a heightened burden of proof to prove that multifamily housing is equally or better suited than the commercial that is there now. Correct, okay, thank you. Now, a question for somebody in the planning department. A drive-through, a drive-through like an Arby's or Taco Bell, could that be developed on the west side as things are now?
On the west side, yes.
Yes, on the east side, it could not?
Correct.
Okay. Then, we talked about this would be developed now at the, to the density of RM2. And I remember our discussion a couple meetings ago about the location down on commercial RM1, RM2. RM2 was higher-density zoning than RM1. That was a whole issue we were talking about then. Final question I have is, there's been some discussion about the fact that the rentals in the Faywright neighborhood are at 42 percent, where the average is 39 percent. My question is, do we know the, of those rentals, what percentage of them are multifamily dwellings versus what percentage of them are single-family dwellings that are rented?
No, I don't think we have.
Absolutely no idea, okay. And, you know, you can see why I asked that, because if, if it's 42 percent and that 42 percent is multiple family, that's one way to look at it, if the 42 percent is single-family, then this development takes on another, a different tone. Okay, thank you.
Counselor Nanki, followed by Counselor Benjamin.
Looking back over a bazillion years, would you consider that to be a CN overlay zone on top of a CR then?
It's, it's a CR zone with some limitations.
But we had a ton of overlays all the time, and staff came to really hate them because they did really bad things, and led to restrictions that no one could foresee down the road as well. And so I'm just trying to, as far as when a lot of those other overlays came in, was this an easy way to take one piece of property and do similar then? Do we have any other zones in town that have a CR with a CN restriction?
Not that I'm aware of.
But we do have other zone change cases that included use limitations on them, which is what this is.
Right. Do we do that anymore, or was that common practice back in and around that time?
We try to avoid doing that because it causes this kind of a confusing situation. But there are, from time to time, there are some extraordinary circumstances that it's deemed appropriate to limit certain uses. I'll give you an example, in the sort of recent history, we had some zone changes on Fairview Industrial Drive from industrial business campus to industrial commercial. And it was determined that most of the uses that would be allowed in that IC zone would be okay and appropriate, but certain uses, such as auto sales, supermarkets, I think, would not be appropriate for that particular environment. And so there was a use limitation imposed on those zone changes as well.
Right. Good, thanks.
All right, Counselor Benjamin, followed by Counselor Benard.
Has there been anybody looking around for permitting on, for business application or commercial applications on this property? Besides the failed one, that was what, eight years ago, 10 years ago?
Right, there, so what you're not seeing on the photo here is that dental clinic that was just recently completed, but we don't have any development applications on those other properties.
Well, not now, but has there been people asking and acquiring about, I know that sometimes we kind of have an ear to the street, the staff does.
I don't think we've heard much about the site.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Benjamin, excuse me, Counselor Benard.
Thank you, I think this discussion was brought up by Counselor Bennett, and I just want to, want to double-check on this. In the report that we have, it's in the first few pages, probably maybe page six or so, it talks about the CN zone, the CN zone that's on the east half of this property. And yet it admits here that the CN zone isn't supposed to be within a half a mile of other CR zones. Can we walk back through that again? Because it just, the requirement that the CN, which is now what everybody wants, seems contradictory to what the law had actually said originally.
Right, there's, there's a lot of discussion, you know, 20 years ago, when they were looking at this, about how to limit the uses, what zones would be appropriate. The commercial, neighborhood commercial was brought up, but really, the intent of that zone is to embed these neighborhood commercials in residential areas that are off of major arterials, away from other commercial zoning properties. So you have really a small-scale business that's designed to suit or serve the, the people in that immediate area. Because of that, because of where we want these things to be, it's not an appropriate zoning so close to commercial and right next to that arterial street here. So CN zoning by itself isn't an appropriate fit for this, this spot.
So, so I think what Counselor Bennett said, somebody made an error way back in 1997 in reference to even allowing the CN zone in this area.
Well, again, it was one of those, it's, it's a use limitation for the property. It's a CR zoning, it's retail commercial with some limitations. And the best way that they could think at that time was to use the list that was already there for the CN zone and say, whatever's permitted in both would be suited for this property.
Yeah, that's, I mean, this wasn't all that many years after they started doing land zoning, and they were still trying to figure things out. It is interesting, in the very next paragraph, it just says testimony in 97 said that they would prefer residential zoning over commercial, especially townhouses, which is kind of what's being proposed. But that was 97, and this is 2016, so, thanks.
All right, are there any other questions for staff? All right, thank you, we will now have rebuttal by the applicant. And you'll have five minutes.
Thank you.
Okay, and I encourage you, really speak right up into the microphone, so we can all hear you.
I will try.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
I'm gonna start in a, in a little bit of a reversal. I, I think that Ms. Porter probably provided one of the best sets of information for why our opinion and the brokers that have represented this property's opinion is that this property is, is not going to develop, or at least hasn't had an opportunity to develop for commercial, because she picked to be right on the corner of Skyline and Liberty, because it's the best location. You start putting commercial uses back off of Liberty, and where they don't have the visibility that most commercial uses have, and it's not viable. I think that's been the problem with this. You know, the, the talk from the, from the, from the neighborhood is that the economy's turned around, so we're gonna have use, uses that are gonna come here. This property has been this zone since 1997. And that was well before, matter of fact, that was during the peak of the economic development that we had in this community, and it didn't develop, so. I, I don't think that that in of itself justifies leaving this commercial and hoping that someday in the distant future that it develops. It is, it is appropriate for multifamily, staff has told you that, we've, we've pointed out the citing criteria for it. We believe it is a good use, we believe it is compatible. I have a hard time believing that the neighborhood residents believe that commercial is, uses that could go there are more compatible with them than residential uses. Irrespective of the height, because you could have the same heights in any of the uses. So I, I just have, I just have a hard time believing that that's truly what they would believe once someone came in with site design and wanted to put something tall in their backyard. But that said, we, we, we think that we've, we've put together a pretty good set of justifications for this. This whole thing about zone change and other stuff, it has made it very confusing. All we're asking to do is to eliminate a condition that was imposed from a zone, from the previous zone change. And we're willing to live with changing the criteria to simply just allow multifamily in this area and not eliminate the CN use overlay, if you want to say that it's been imposed on it. But we, we believe that, that we're, we're doing it. We provided more parking than the minimum, we've offered to provide buffering, to limit access to Pembroke, to, to, to do the things we can to offset this. I, I believe that the council, one of the counselors pointed out that, you know, you could have five-story office building and people there, which could be, as staff pointed out, 24 hours a day looking in people's backyards, and have the same impact that people could have from, from the balconies of apartments. Now, I don't find too many people out on their balconies after dark. I don't find too many people out on balconies a lot of the times. Mr. Montagnia does, does not allow people to smoke and to do barbecue, have barbecues on the back of his units, because he's had, he's had some negative fire impacts from those, so he doesn't, doesn't allow that to happen. Mr. Montagnia owns some commercial property over on Commercial Street near the courthouse fitness center. He has both sides of courthouse fitness, so he's had that property since 1998. And he hasn't had anybody come along and offer to develop that commercial property, so. This town isn't short of commercial property that's available for development that has, that has good, good visibility. Commercial just isn't, as staff pointed out, isn't gonna develop as fast as the multifamily housing is. I don't know where I would bring you a housing, multifamily housing project today to help satisfy your 200-some acre shortage that wouldn't be in somebody's neighborhood. I don't know where that's gonna be. And you're, you, you have to figure out where to put it, you're under mandate to do that. This impacts some people, but not nearly as many as it would if there was residences on three sides of it. And that could be the case, and I brought you sites that have been that way, and we know how that went. So I think this is a good site. I realize that there's some incon, some inconsistencies with what everybody is hoping for, but you're gonna have to do that everywhere, not just here. You're gonna have to find lots of places where you're gonna be in somebody's neighborhood, putting in a use someplace that someone didn't expect. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have with me.
Thank you, just a moment. Okay, all right, questions from counselors, but we want to be careful not to begin deliberating among ourselves at this point, questions only, Counselor Benjamin.
I noticed you mentioned something about having eight-foot fencing and 12-foot trees and whatnot on that, that one side, but that Pembroke, was there going to be any fencing and whatnot of the same caliber going along Pembroke?
It's not required, if council would believe that, that putting some type of site obscuring, screening along there would be beneficial to the neighborhood, we would have no objection to that. But the code doesn't require it there, so.
Right, well, it's, yeah, well, it's more of the parking situation that apartments sometimes bring complexes. It's like, like you, people said, that sometimes families have three cars in a two-bedroom apartment, so.
We, 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 we don't have any issues if council believes that that would be appropriate to help manage the potential for parking and stuff. Our intention was to, to make this site, to the extent that we can, a secured site. We're proposing to have it, to have the entrance gated, as well as to have the, to secure gate on Pembroke. It's intended to have it gated, so our goal is to make it feel that way, so we, we may be coming back to staff asking to fence that, but it's not a requirement.
Right, okay, thank you.
Counselor Benard, followed by Counselor Anderson.
Quick question I have here, of those two, were they 12 plexes that are on the northeast corner?
There's actually 27, one's a five, one has five-unit footprint and one has a four-unit footprint.
Okay, but they're all, both of those are three-story?
Yes, sir.
My question is, is basically is this, had you considered making those two stories?
Well, we, we, we always, have always looked at those options. The, the issue becomes, I, we can't make those units back someplace else on this site right now. So it's, it's a case of, you, you take those top, if, if you go from three-story to two-story, you take nine units off, it's nine units less revenue, I know you know what that means.
I know what that means, I just, I'm just figuring if you could reconfigure it and soften the impact.
And the question would be, does it change the perceived impacts? You still have two-story units looking in people's backyards, I, I don't know, that's, you, you guys get to decide that, not me, but I don't think it changes anything.
Just an idea to consider, that's all I'm getting to, I, I, you know, if you could make it up elsewhere on the property, that would be a wonderful solution, I think.
Counselor Anderson.
Thank you. I think I heard you say, sir, that you had, you are going to make the entrance gated.
That's correct.
So the entrance of the private little roadway that you will build out to Liberty and Sunny, Skyline? I'm forgetting, yeah, so I'm seeing, right in the middle where, yes, the only entrance.
We're proposing to gate.
Right there, okay. And now, is, is that something that can be made a condition? I'm looking at the planning people, okay?
Sure.
Yes.
Then, along the lines of what Counselor Benard was asking, I look at this and say, well, there's the commercial center office, you know, not commercial, community center, you know, on the, right at the L there. Had you considered putting that over on the other side on the north unit where the, and moving the apartments one side or the other?
We, we have explored different development options for that site, and we did look at that option. It is, it does not turn out to be as desirable for us. Does it mean that we can't make some trade and lessen the impact over on the other side and move the wreck building around? It's, those are always possibilities. What you see is the site plan is developed based on what we believe is the optimum for the site to maximize the uses and the ability to access and parking.
Thank you very much.
Are there more questions? All right, then we will close the public hearing, and we will begin our deliberation. And Counselor McCoy, do you have a motion to present? Oh, Counselor Benard will be asked to make a motion.
Yeah, it's in my word, I guess.
It is, sorry.
Lucky Steve.
Right.
After due consideration and some thoughts, I had some things that I wrote down, I want to ask our attorney, again, are we within, within the next city council meeting, within the 120-day? Are we right on the edge, or we're okay?
So the, the deadline is towards the end of February, so you would have an opportunity to come back on the 25th to vote, and then you would have a written decision on the next, the first meeting in February.
Okay, with that in mind, then, I would like to move to continue the public hearing, closing it to further oral testimony, but keeping it open for written testimony until the next council meeting on February 25th.
I have a point of order to ask, because the city attorney had advised me that we do not need to keep this hearing open, because it already was heard through the hearings officer process, and there's been ample time for testimony.
So would the option would be to close the public hearing at this point?
You, you're not mandated to keep the hearing open, you can close, you can keep it open, it's your option. You can close, you can keep it open, it's your option. At this point, you can close the hearing, keep the record open, or you can just close the hearing and the record and then have deliberations at the next meeting if you're not ready to.
What I think I'd like to do is push on for the deliberations to the next meeting.
Without additional record period?
Without additional record coming in.
Okay. All right.
So my motion would be to close the public hearing.
Yeah, it's closed.
To public testimony, keep it, but, okay, but, but keep it open for further deliberations until the February 25th meeting.
January 25th?
January 25th. I'm sorry. I have February written down there.
So to confirm the record, the record would be closed, no additional evidence would be permitted. I assume the applicant doesn't want an opportunity for final written argument, so that would be great.
Okay.
So would that be a question?
Do you want a session?
All right. It's been moved by Councillor Bednar's and, and seconded by Councillor Dickey to, to close, well, we'll close the hearing, so your motion is, in effect, is to continue until the January 25th meeting for deliberation.
Correct. And I wondered if, at this point, if I could add, add to that. And there were actually five requirements that I had looked at here and that I wanted to conclude, one of which was not allowing the sidewalks on Music Street to connect, and that was something that we had talked about. Emergency access only onto Pembroke, eight-foot wooden fence. I mean, can this be put in here?
Would these items not actually be the things that we'd be deliberating about?
Exactly.
Okay. Then you don't need to do those tonight.
So they don't need to do that?
Right. Okay. All right. So the motion on the floor is to continue until, to defer until January 25th deliberation.
I, I would just like to warn councillors that this is quasi-judicial, so during that interim, please avoid contact with the public regarding the substance. I'm not sure.
And likewise, encourage the public to avoid contact with the councillor?
To avoid contact with us, right.
So if you're not getting any new information, there may not be a good reason to continue deliberations, but that's your call.
I think councillors just want to read through this one more time and really understand what we're being asked.
All right. There's a motion on the floor. Is there discussion? Councillor Anderson.
Thank you very much.
And remember, we're not deliberating.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm just talking about the motion.
All right.
I hate the system. I could make arguments on either side, and they would be good arguments, and this is, I have really studied this, because I read the whole thing. If we're closing the hearing and not taking any more written comments, this is not going to be an any easier decision on the 25th of January than it is on the 11th of January. So I think we ought to make the decision tonight, so I'll vote against, and I can't say which way I'm going to vote, but I, 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 I think we ought to go ahead.
Councillor Bennett.
Yeah, I'll, I'm going to support it, because I think with a little more time, it'll be a more thoughtful decision. We can make a quick decision tonight. I think we all know, we can vote yes and no, and, and that's pretty easy to do, but I think there's been so much information presented tonight. There's a chance to look now back at the record through that filter that we've accumulated tonight. I think it's, I appreciate the councillor's motion. I think it gives us a real opportunity to have some thoughtful time, maybe a more, a more abbreviated deliberative process next time, too, because we'll all have had a chance to think this thing through.
Okay. Councillor Nanki, followed by Councillor McCoy.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Similar, because it is complex, and I want to make sure that I really understand the decision I'm making, because it is criteria-based, and that's why we're here. That being said, it is not prohibited for councillors to contact staff to get clarification as well during this time. Is that correct?
That's, that's correct. You're welcome to talk to staff. Staff can't give you any new facts, only the facts that are in the record.
Councillor McCoy.
I'll support this, too. I agree with Councillor Bennett. There is so much stuff, I mean, I read this. I don't think I absorbed it as well as Councillor Anderson, but I read it here this afternoon, and it's 146 pages or something of testimony and writing and facts, and then you add in all the stuff we heard today. I just want to sit down, have a good night's sleep, get up in the morning and let it percolate a little bit before I start trying to make a decision that impacts people's, where they live, their neighborhoods, businesses that have, you know, got, you know, property there that they want to develop and, and money in the, money out, put out already. This is an important decision, it's a big deal, and I don't want to do it just, okay, spent at 10 to 10 after three and a half hours of testimony.
All right. The motion on the floor, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay.
Nay.
Motion carries unanimously, and the no vote is, I'm sorry, motion, the motion did not, the motion carried, sorry.
It used to be an I'm in eight to one vote, but I want to be recognized.
And Councillor Anderson voted no. We're going to take a quick break, and then we're going to need a motion to extend. Okay, quick break.
Yay!
Giving me the time to do that. So we are back in session, and I need a motion to extend.
Madam Mayor, I move we extend for 15 minutes to 10:15.
Okay. It's been moved by Councillor McCoy and seconded by Councillor Bednar's to extend for 15 minutes. Is there discussion? No. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you very much.
We made it.
We made it. All right, here we are. Now we are, thank you. Now we are at special orders of business, and tonight, special orders of business have to deal with two of the polls on the agenda. The first is item 3.3A.
B.
B.
I'm sorry, 3.3B, selective salary adjustment for deputy police classification. And do we have a motion? Tom Anderson, Councillor Anderson is pulling this one.
Yes, I do, and, and for convenience purposes, could I move both of these, 3B and, 3 sub 3B and 3 sub, okay.
Okay.
There you go. I got that answer. I move the staff recommendation on, on 3.3B.
All right. And is there a second?
Nice, yeah, don't even let it go.
All right. Moved by Councillor Anderson and seconded by Councillor Nanki. Is there discussion?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Anderson.
Thank you very much. First of all, I want to thank HR Director Mina Hansen for staying here through our long attenuated discussion, and I didn't realize it would take that long when I pulled these items, but they're both related, and I support this wholeheartedly, the increase for both the deputy chief and then the other increases when we get to them, but I want the public to know how important this is, because we need to have people who are competent and dedicated and good public servants here, and in order to do that, we've got to pay them what, what the position really entails and requires, looking at our comparable cities in the state of Oregon. So I wonder, having said that, maybe I just ask a leading question. HR Director Hansen, do you agree with that, and could you elaborate on that?
Hi, Mina Hansen, HR Director for the city of Salem. We do need to maintain some competitive position in the marketplace in order to pull the best and brightest, as they say, into our market. We know that some of our positions, like the deputy police chief vacancy that we have, that we're competing with other entities, and to get the caliber of a candidate we need, we believe we have to maintain it at par with the market, and so we use our marketplace analysis to determine that and hope that that gives us the edge, along with the livability of our city, the lower housing rates. We are doing some preliminary research that shows that we're, the cost of living in our city is, is a benefit to bringing in people, so that with being market competitive, we hope we get the best.
Okay. All right. Councillor Nanki.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, as long as we're here. And I noted there was a, something in the media a week or two ago now, that Portland is actually looking at increasing their, their wages and benefits as well to try to maintain their police force and not lose them. Does that not then raise the top to where it creates a vacuum and almost sucks everybody else's wages up, no matter the size of their jurisdiction?
It can. Portland really isn't a competitor of ours from the perspective that people who want to live and work in Portland, want to live and work in Portland. Wages are higher, the cost of living is substantially higher. There's a variety of reasons you might not want to be, work for the city of Portland in whatever bureau that might be. There is some benefit to being in our jurisdiction. When we look at our comparators, we look at the PECPA standards or the Public Employees' Collective Bargaining Act for our standards, and Portland is not one of our comparators.
Correct.
There are Hillsborough, Gresham, Beaverton, and Eugene.
But as, as we look at those salaries and what have you, if I'm, you know, I've been with a jurisdiction circling metro for some time, my next logical might be if I wanted more money to go to Portland Police Department.
Certainly, and we'll probably never be able to outcompete Portland.
Correct.
But we have to appeal for, when we recruit on other basis besides things like livability, the character and credibility of our police force, the character of our chief.
But the bigger the gap then between Portland and their circle will actually raise those, which will raise our comparators over time.
Eventually, yes.
Okay.
Councillor McCoy, and then Councillor.
Well, as long as we're on this topic, I was saving it for the, the next poll, but I'll go, go now, Mina. I understand, you know, the comparators we're using, but as I looked at that and read the, you know, the material, it struck me that we're a city of 160,000, and we're still comparing ourselves with a bunch of cities that are less than 100,000 and as low as 50,000 or 60,000. And we based our salaries on that, and it seems to me they're probably still too low in that executive pay schedule, just from the fact, if I'm working in a, whether it's a police department or as a HR person in a city with 60,000 people, I come to a city with 160,000 people and a much larger staff, I'm going to assume there's a pretty substantial jump in pay, not a comparative salary. So, you know, I support what we've done, but I, I think we probably, especially on the executive committee or executive level salaries, I think they're too low still.
Okay. Councillor Bednar's.
So from the man who said, "I hate the system tonight."
I hate it.
What we're doing, yeah, well, I have the same, the same comment, which is, I want people to know that when we're comparing, we're comparing because we're required by collective bargaining, by law. It's not that we want to or don't want to.
Yes and no. We are required, when we're working in our collective bargaining units, to look at our, our comparators under PECPA. It's not true with our non-represented. We could pick other comparators.
And these are non, these are non?
And these are non-represented. The dilemma becomes kind of that transparency or the disingenuousness to say, as I sit across from the bargaining units, that these are your comparators, this is what we compare you to, and this is what we determine for salary, and not use a similar yardstick with our non-represented. So we try to apply that standard for that very transparency reason.
So have you ever tried to convince them that we have a superior city and they should take a lower wage because of that?
Yes. Yes.
Doesn't work so well, sometimes.
Councillor McCoy.
Mine, I would, my response to that is salary, or a, a, a union job in Hillsborough, working in an HR department, and a union job in Salem, working in the HR department are pretty similar. I don't think managing a police, you know, managing any of the departments in a city of 160,000 are similar to managing the part, same department in a city of 50,000 or 60,000. So I understand, maybe being PC, using those as comparisons, I think this comparison should be with like cities of 160,000 people, if we're going to do this the proper way.
Okay. Where's there, let's see, Councillor Bednar's, you, done. All right. Any other further discussion on this? The motion on the floor is to adopt staff recommendation. It's been, that was moved by Councillor Bednar's.
Anderson, seconded by Nanki.
Thank you. Moved by Councillor Anderson, seconded by Councillor Nanki. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. And our next item is on 3.3F, and that also was pulled by Councillor Anderson. Councillor Anderson, do you have a motion?
Well, yes, I do. I move the staff recommendation on item 3.3F.
Second.
It's been moved by Councillor Anderson and seconded by Councillor Bednar's. And is there discussion on this one, Councillor Anderson?
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. I, I offer the same reasons for this that I offered for 3.3B. We need to be competitive, we need to keep and retain good public servants, servants here, and this is one way to do it. I do have a little comment, though, in the, in the body of the 3.3F, we talk about five positions being behind the public sector market, and we list them, police, fire chief, community development, HR, deputy city manager, but then when we look at attachment one, I also see that deservedly so, the public works director has gone up, too. So he's not, shouldn't we be talking about six people as opposed to five, five positions?
The public works director position in, in our comparable agencies was not behind market, our, our position was not, but after much discussion, our public works directors' job classification is much broader than that in our, in our like agencies. So part of the exercise in this was not only to look at our market comparability, but to create some internal equity. So you'll see that we created a three-range system for executive compensation, and we've moved the public works director based on the span of control and the size of the budget and the role in the city into the executive range.
That makes perfect sense to me. I mean, he should be at a level of the other department directors. That's clear. And then I want to point out again to the general public that just because these ranges go up, that doesn't mean we're going to, the salaries are going to go up to the top of the range. That depends on the city managers. Yeah, eventually they could get there, but right now they don't just jump there. It depends on the, whatever the city manager decides in his review of people, and it may or may not actually increase the money going out on any given budget year.
Councillor McCoy.
This, this is great. I think it's way overdue, and I think we need to, I would hope, I don't know, I did, I don't remember seeing this in there, we're going to review this yearly, annually? No? Every couple of years? We're not going to let this go and end up in the same position we've been in with way out of whack.
So HR is doing salary selective reviews every year, which is not something we had done before. I've committed that we're going to do that and have that discussion. Whether that results in salary increases depends on what the marketplace does, but we do need to, because we've created a situation where in order to, one of the elements that we haven't talked about is that in order to give the deputy chief of police an increase, I needed to give the chief of police an increase, or I'd be in an upside-down situation. So we do need to create more of a range, and we have to look at it more frequently.
Yeah, thanks.
Yeah, I'd like to speak to that. I really appreciate the work that our HR director is doing and the work that the staff are doing to do these analyses. I know we've been without them for quite some time, and when we've been in a situation to hire, we're always having to try to play catch-up, and that's really not a very efficient way to run a railroad or a city, so. Thank you for persevering with this and helping us as a council to understand how all of this works together. And I also agree with what Councillor McCoy was saying. Where we're looking at executive positions, we're looking at director positions, I really think we should be looking at comps that include even positions in state government, positions in other types of major municipalities, or even the private sector, because those are really what we're competing against. So I, I encourage us to go away from that set list in those specific areas and be able to really look at the employment market as, as a broader category. All right. So there's a motion on the floor, and made by Councillor Anderson and seconded by Councillor Bednar's to support staff recommendation. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I move we extend another 15 minutes to 10:30.
It's been moved by Councillor McCoy, seconded by Councillor Bednar's to extend another 15 minutes. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. Nay, oh, all right, one nay, Councillor Dickey. I'm sorry.
In my eye.
That's the way it goes. Okay. We are now to our information reports that you see in the agenda, and I have two hands[1796.86] hands up, Counselor Bennett, followed by Counselor Anderson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion on 6A, ask the city council, have the city council call up the hearings officer decision on variance case number VAR 15-02.
Second.
Madam Mayor, I'll save all my comments for when we deliberate on this later. Suffice it to say, it's about an illuminated clock, and I'd like to get this resolved.
All right. The motion by Counselor Bennett, and who did the second?
Nanki.
Seconded by Counselor Nanki. And that's the discussion, and all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. Motion carries unanimously, and Counselor Anderson had his hand up.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm speaking now to item H, which is the review of recent vehicle pedestrian crashes. This is an item that calls for a larger discussion, and it's already 10:15. I'm going to move that we postpone the acceptance of this report and discussion of this report until the January 25th meeting.
Second.
All right, it's been moved by Counselor Anderson and seconded by Counselor Bednarz to move this item to the agenda for the January 25th meeting. Would it also then appear as an information report? Is that what you have in mind?
I think that's fine. We're going to have some discussion about this. I know I have some questions, and I'm sure the other councilors have questions and comments. So if there's some place that's more appropriate than an information report, then it should be moved there.
Well, I suppose we could place it as a special order of business.
No, I'm fine with an information report.
That's okay?
Yeah.
Information report. All right. The motion by Counselor Anderson, and, oh, I see discussion. Counselor Bennett?
Yeah, just very briefly, Madam Mayor, I really recommend that anyone in the public that is interested in this pedestrian crashes issue, read this report. It is excellent, and it is provocative, I think. It is very interesting, and I think, given the kind of information I receive, it indicates to me that people really need to look at a fact-based report, and then let's have a really quality conversation. I look forward to it. I think the chief and his folks have done just a fantastic job on this.
Great, thank you. Counselor Nanki.
Yeah, kind of in the same, it's not connecting, but it's moving two items to the next agenda because I think I'd like to have more discussion on the marijuana, on item G, at least discuss that. So I would move to amend to include moving the marijuana issue with the vehicle pedestrian crashes to the --
Can we do those as joint motion?
On the 25th.
You wouldn't let me do a joint motion.
Well, you're special.
Yeah. I guess my only question, there were some potential deadlines in tax on recreational marijuana. It's not going to make any difference.
No, not a problem.
Okay.
All right, so the motion then is to, well, we haven't voted yet on --
There's an amendment we need to vote on first to add it to the original.
I'm sorry, there's --
He amended.
We need to vote on the amendment, and then it will become part of the main motion as amended.
All right. And the amendment, the amended motion reads as what?
Was to move item G to the January 25th meeting along with item H.
All right. All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. The amended motion passes. So the motion is --
That was just the amendment.
Now we need to move, vote on the main motion.
Now we have the main motion.
Vote on the main motion, and the main motion was made by Counselor Anderson, seconded by?
Counselor Bednarz.
Counselor Bednarz. All right, and that motion is to?
Postpone now both items 3G, excuse me, 6G and 6H to discussion for the next meeting on January 25th.
Excellent. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. Appreciate your help on this. I don't know if anyone --
Hey, it's getting late, and you're just like, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I have one more item on information reports that I just want to ask a quick question on.
All right.
On 6B in regards to the Corden Road, Old McClay. We talked once upon a time about a signal light at Gaffin. Is that, does this element actually cause that to take place?
It is because of this development that we will construct the signal. What is laid out is that this development will do all of the pavement improvements to accept the signal, and then we will come back and construct the signal with other funding.
And what kind of timeframe would that lie on?
Realistically, I would hope to get it done this year, in 2016, but, you know, signal equipment takes a long time to get delivered, so it might be next spring.
Okay.
Really, yeah.
Yeah, originally, it was, I'd heard, once you started into the process, it was a year to a year and a half.
Yeah, yeah, so we want to get it in. We are coordinated with the developer and the developer's engineer who was here this evening. So once they go and they deliver the asphalt improvements, then we'll be right behind them.
Excellent, thank you.
And that'll include extending the left turn lanes, some additional right turn lanes, and then the signal will go.
Yeah, I just couldn't see the place where the light was.
It's not, it's not a requirement of --
It's like, we're wiping all this pavement, but there's no light.
Yeah, but it's, we're set up to coordinate and come in right behind them.
Excellent, thanks.
All right, we'll now move to ordinances. Would the city recorder please introduce the first ordinance, 7.1A?
Ordinance Bill Number 216, declaring certain territory located at 2415 Doakes Ferry Road Northwest annexed to the city of Salem, prescribing zoning and withdrawing the territory from the Salem Suburban Rural Fire District.
All right, is there a motion by Counselor Lewis?
Move staff recommendation?
It's been moved by Counselor Lewis and seconded by Counselor Bednarz to move staff recommendation, which is to advance the bill to second reading for enactment. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. And we have a second ordinance bill, Number 3-16. Would the recorder please introduce that one?
Ordinance Bill 316, declaring certain territory located at 1035 Hoffman Road Northeast annexed to the city of Salem, prescribing zoning and withdrawing the territory from the Marion County Fire District Number 1.
Thank you. Counselor Benjamin, do you have a motion?
I move for staff recommendation.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Benjamin and seconded by Counselor Bednarz to move the staff recommendation, which advances it to second reading. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. We have no ordinances for second reading, and has anyone signed up for public comment? Oh, Margot Lucas is here. Good evening, Margot, welcome.
Nice to see you again.
You have really stayed the course here.
I just want to start by saying you can't get rid of me that easily. Is this one on? This one is on. Sorry about that. Okay, I promise I'll be brief. Good evening, first of all. The reason I came tonight is because, oh, sorry, Margot Lucas, West Salem Cannabis, 2625 Salem Dallas Highway. The reason I came tonight is because I wanted to point out to you that OLCC is accepting licenses as of the last week for recreational dispensaries, and I wanted to point out to you that we have no recreational ordinance here in the city, and so I would suggest to you that we perhaps amend the current medical marijuana ordinance to include the restrictions that we have under that for both medical and recreational marijuana. Right now, as it stands, people could be applying for OLCC licenses in areas that have no restrictions from parks, daycares, residential, as we all put into that medical marijuana ordinance. So that's a concern, and I also wanted to point out to you that according to OHA, as of December 28th, there are 19 approved applications here in the city of Salem. Last year, when we put that ordinance together, there were eight, and there were also seven new applications potentially. So what the difference is, is that the state, under the OLCC rules, has a 1,000-foot boundary restriction for schools, but none between dispensaries. So right now, these, as long as they're 1,000 feet away from a school, that would be the only restriction. So I would encourage you to consider amending that ordinance to include recreational marijuana, and we would also like to ask that, and make sure you're aware that these land use compatibility statements that will be required by OLCC are already coming into, according to Mr. Gross, already coming into the planning office. So we don't want those, you know, Lux, those land use compatibility statements to, you know, to get ahead of the process here. So what we would recommend, like I said, is medical marijuana ordinance being amended to also include recreational, and also we would make a suggestion that if the state, which they are not allowing now, but I believe that there's a very good chance they will allow co-location of these facilities, meaning a marijuana, a medical, and a recreational could be in the same address, that if the state allows that, that we also allow that as well. So I think that's it. I said I'd be brief, so there it is. I will follow up with some emails.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Ms. Lucas?
No.
I don't see any. All right, thank you very much. Appreciate you coming. And the next thing is under new business, mayor's item, just as an informational-only item for everyone's perusal, the police facility council subcommittee progress report. So I remind everyone that we have a work session on the 21st, and I hope that everyone's able to attend, or if you're not able to attend, that you get answers, questions answered in the meantime, et cetera. With that, I see nothing else on the agenda. We are adjourned.
Yay!